Councilmember favor, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, council is appreciative to have Brother Mohammed Worsame from Massajid Tamiya to pray with us this evening. Councilmember, welcome to council.
To the city council, thank you for having me. Before we begin our prayer, I'd just like to point to the importance of prayer in our faith tradition in Islam. The prayer is referred to as the basis of all worship, and it is called in Arabic, Mastagh al Ibadah, the basis of all worship. And it is that which God says that if you call upon Him, He will always answer. And so to begin our prayer, let us pray. In the name of God, the most compassionate, the most merciful, whom all praises due to, Creator, maintainer, and sustainer of all that is in existence, Master of justice, bestower of guidance. We ask as your servants to show us the truth and grant us the conviction to follow it, and show us falsehood and give us the conviction to avoid it. Bless us with wisdom in our speech and actions, and grant us the ability to guide those who are around us. We pray for peace and not enmity. We pray for love and not hate. And allow us to be for truth, no matter who it is for or against, and for justice, no matter who it is for or against. We pray that you bestow upon us the light of guidance and good faith, and protect us from doing things that displease you. Amen.
Bankston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's favor, Reemy, President Harden. I'm sorry, Mr. Reemy's not here. President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with this conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion dismissed with the reading of the journal? Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's favor, President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Hearing none, the journal is approved. This week's communications received by the city clerk's offices are listed on the agenda and we published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be written to the record?
Not this time.
Are there any resolutions or announcements from councilmembers, starting with Councilmember Bankston?
Thank you, Council President. I just have one resolution this evening, and as I read it, I'm going to ask the folks to come forward as I read. Tonight, we have Resolution 0072X-2022 to recognize April 6, 2022, as National Assistive Technology Awareness Day. Council colleagues, as Chair of the Technology Committee, I'm excited to recognize this great day in our city. Despite the day itself already passing as Chair of Technology, I believe it is still important to acknowledge the role that assistive technology plays across our disability community. Assistive technology is an item, a piece of equipment or product system that is used to increase, maintain, or improve the functional capabilities of an individual with a disability or an older adult. As you can imagine, the COVID-19 pandemic exposed how vital assistive tech and remote assistance are in creating inclusive communities, giving disabled individuals access to education, and affording these individuals the opportunities for economic self-sustainability. In 2018, the Center for Disease Control and Prevention reported that 1 in 4 individuals in the United States, or almost 61 million individuals, have a disability. In Ohio alone in 2021, 1,057 individuals with an intellectual or developmental disability were authorized for remote support, and 3,016 intellectually or developmentally disabled individuals were authorized for assistive technology. In chambers tonight, we have no stranger, Ms. Kristen Brown, as well as Ms. Jen Shiegel, Ms. Marcy Slaughter to speak on the importance of this assistive technology. If you ladies would mind coming forward. All right, and good to see you again, Ms. Brown. And the floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Shannon Harden and all council. As I gave those data, we have seen a great amount of people get more independent with assistive technology, and it improves health and safety, and makes individuals more independent. So we just wanted to give this awareness because it's very important.
Thank you, councilmembers, for inviting me. I am on the Franklin County Board of Board D.D., and I'm also Ohio Tech Ambassador. What we do at Ohio Tech Ambassador is we help people with disabilities, their allies, and people on boards, to show people with disabilities how to work their technologies and how to be independent in their own home and in the community. I use remote support that makes me feel independent every day. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. My name is Jen Schlekel, and I wear a lot of hats. Among my many hats, I am a biomedical engineer. I'm an Ohio State alumni. I'm an Ohio State University of Presidents Prize Fellow, and I'm also an Ohio Tech Ambassador. That's the hat that brings me here today. One fact that I know deeply about my life is if it weren't for assistive technology, nothing about my life would be possible, from the way that I move to the way that I eat. But I think that an important thing to notice about assistive technology is that, yes, it helps the aging community, it helps the disability community, but it helps everyone. Because everyone in this room that has a smartphone is using a piece of assistive technology. And so as we think about that, we should think about broadening our scope of how important it is to everyone. And so I really deeply appreciate the moment here of your recognition of the importance of Assistive Technology Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? No? Thank you again, ladies, for your continued advocacy. Council President, I move for passage.
Bankston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's favor, President Harden.
And that's all I have for announcements and resolutions, Council President.
Councilmember Barosa, De Padilla.
I have one announcement this evening, and it is an exciting one, because today we launched the new and improved 911. Not to be confused, 311. The 311 Call Center is a city resource that allows residents to request non-emergency city services and is available to residents, businesses, and visitors alike. The 311 system helps inform city agencies by providing insight into the needs of residents and helping measure how well services are delivered. The improvements made to the system will help with the ease of use, as well as give our residents further insight and transparency into the cases they open and how they are being addressed. So, you know, I like show and tell. I have a very brief video to show some of the improvements that you will see and the new features on 311.
So, what's new? To start, unique response fields for service requests. Service requests available through the website or new mobile application have been updated with additional information fields. Completing the information fields will help to speed the routing and resolution of your issue. Next up, there's smarter grouping of requests. So learn right away if an issue has already been reported in your neighborhood, and you can also view the community map to see other requests in your area or across the city. Pin drop accuracy is another feature, which allows you to describe your requests with pinpoint accuracy by dropping a pin on the exact location where city services is needed, whether it be a specific address or in the middle of an intersection. And there's more. New informational articles can be accessed through our 311 Knowledge Base Library. Articles found in the knowledge base will summarize and explain various city processes and programs and policies. And finally, per your requests, real-time updates for quicker and more meaningful communication. You can sign up for alerts and notifications about the status of your requests, and you can be notified by email or push notification. So, why is this important to you? These new features are all made with you, our customers, top of mind. Your new online 311 experience will be faster, easier, more responsive. Submitting your requests online or through the new mobile application will allow for your requests to reach the proper destination more quickly, providing a more efficient response. And remember, if you feel the need to speak with a customer service representative, we are still here, available for you Monday through Friday during regular business hours. And just as before, when call volume happens to be high, we encourage you to use our callback option. This helps eliminate long wait times. By choosing the callback option when it's offered, it keeps your place in line, and your call will be answered by the next available representative. To learn more...
Perfect. Thank you. I want to now turn the floor over to Deputy Director DeFenderfer from the Department of Neighborhoods and Director Orr from the Department of Technology to provide further insight. But before I do, I just want to thank you, Deputy Director, and Director William Scott, and Councilmember Doran, who started this project as a past Chair of this committee. This was a long and very thoughtful process that engaged many of our residents, area commissioners, city staff alike, in helping to make these improvements. I also want to thank and acknowledge the staff at the 311 Customer Service Line for their engagement. I think I shared with you, when I toured the center, my mother was an avid user of 311. I'll let you know what she thinks of the improvements. But these concerns, this process was very thoughtful in taking, you know, it was delayed because we were continuously making improvements to the process. So I want to thank folks. I also ask that people show grace to our 311 Call Center as they are learning a new process along with all of us. So with that, take it away, Deputy Director.
Great. Thank you very much, councilmember. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and celebrate this kickoff of our new 311. I feel like I should have confetti cannons going off or something like that. We'll have to work on that for the future. As you can see by the video, we're very excited to have this new functionality available to our residents in the community, so they can submit requests when it's convenient for them 24/7. Carmen Duncan's, our 311 Service Manager, is a tremendous, obviously spokesperson for the system, as well as a wonderful manager. Again, want to echo your comments, councilmember. Appreciate the support of city council of this. Councilmember Doran, thank you for being there with us at the beginning, passing the original ordinance to allow us to move forward. 311, it's a complex system. You know, we have 795 users across the city, over 1,000 different service request types. So, you know, the successful soft launch we had last week with the system, I think, is a real testament to the efforts of staff across the city to make this a success. We wouldn't be here without Carmen's work, leading the 311 team, the members of the 311 team, our partners in the Department of Technology, as well as staff across the city who were engaged in testing and providing feedback over the last three years that we've been diligently working away on this project. Just last week, in our soft launch, we processed over 4,000 service requests. We've already seen the new app downloaded a few hundred times. So excited to today be kicking off our public launch, educating the community about what's available. The video that you just saw and some guides that we have is how to submit a service request and how to create an account are available on columbus.gov/311. Now with that, I would love to turn it over to our partner in the Department of Technology.
Good evening, President Harden, President Pro Tem Brown, members of council. I really don't know that I have much to add. There's been a lot discussed around the new capabilities and features of the system. I really want to just highlight teamwork. You know, bit of history, Columbus was one of the first cities in the nation to implement 311. Seems like a long time ago, that was back in 2006. That was 16 years ago when we implemented as a city that system. And it was actually written in-house. We followed Chicago's lead, I believe they were the first. We were, I don't know exactly second, but one of the first in the country to do it. Whenever you implement a new complex system, especially one as big and as pervasive as 311, it's never easy. It always takes time, it always takes resources. Most importantly, it takes teamwork, because there's always bumps and challenges along the way. And I have to say, it's been a real partnership, working with Director Carla William Scott and her team, and also all the other city departments, our colleagues across the city in public service, public safety, utilities, building and zoning, code enforcement, and also in technology. Many of the men and women that worked on this project over the last year and a half during a pandemic, I might mention, worked around the clock, night and day, to bring this new system to the city. And just want to congratulate all of them for a job well done. And also to city council and the leadership of our mayor, who really asked us, when we came here years ago, to modernize the city systems. And I think we've done that with this new 311 platform. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak this evening on 311.
Perfect. Thank you both again for all of your hard work, to your departments and to the team of folks that made this possible. I know this needs no encouragement, but to our residents, this is your number-one resource for taking care of the concerns that you're seeing in your neighborhood. And so our office is always a resource. Should there be issues that you feel aren't addressed, we work closely with the Department of Neighborhoods as the Chair of this committee. So I'm excited to see what changes this might bring about, how it might bring more efficiencies, and how it'll bring change to our residents and to our neighborhoods. So thank you. That's all for me.
Thank you, councilmember. Press Pro Tem.
None for me. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Doran's. Councilmember favor.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight, we have a few resolutions, so buckle up and get a few snacks. Just joking, but not really. I'd like to first invite Zach Rupel with the Central Ohio Restored Citizens Collaborative to the podium. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Resolution 0069X-2022 to recognize April 24 through April 30 as National Reentry Week in Columbus. Central Ohio Reentry Week is a collaborative, week-long event that aims to highlight the importance of effective reentry practices and policies. The challenges facing formerly incarcerated people during their transition back into society are numerous, including finding and maintaining employment, locating safe and affordable housing, obtaining reliable transportation, accessing healthcare, which can lead to recidivism. An individual's conviction history should not unfairly exclude them from fair access to public benefits, including fair housing or the right to vote. During Reentry Week, Central Ohio organizations, returning citizens, and reentry professionals come together to host a diverse set of community events that celebrate returning citizens and unpack the intricacies of the justice system as we know it. Myself and my colleagues here on the Columbus City Council remain committed to helping justice-involved residents lead successful lives. To attend the 2022 Reentry Week events, residents can visit www centralohireentryweek.com. With that, we'll turn it over to Mr. Rupel.
Thank you, councilmember favor, for taking time to recognize this important week and the message behind it. It has been my distinct honor to serve as a volunteer administrator for the Central Ohio Restored Citizens Collaborative for the last three years, and I am very, very grateful for the continued partnership between Quark and this council. While the last week of April is indeed National Reentry Week, for the hundreds and hundreds of individuals who return to Columbus from incarceration each year, every week is Reentry Week. It is my belief that the quality of reentry services that we provide, the hearts and minds work we inspire regarding those with justice involvement, and the pursuit of restorative practices we put in place along with the retributive ones we abolish, can be directly correlated to the success and safety of our community. This is what Reentry Week is all about. Over the next two weeks, I encourage this council, those listening in the chambers, and those tuning in elsewhere to be intentional about learning what it means to have a conviction. 98% of the individuals incarcerated will come home, and 1/3 of our community has a conviction. Justice involvement is not a "those people over their problem," it is an "us" reality. Thank you again for bringing light to this reality, and please join us in continuing to elevate equity for all those directly impacted, not just in Reentry Week, but all year long.
Good evening and thank you, councilmember favor, for all of your encouragement and assistance. So my name is Maria Ford, and I am also a volunteer administrator for Quark. And before you, you have three good examples of successful reentry. But thousands of people come home every single year into this community. Thousands of people need jobs. Thousands of people need homes. Many of them end up homeless. If we don't make it a point to understand reentry and see what success is, then we will never be able to help them. And so I encourage your continued support. I encourage everyone in the chambers to visit our Central Ohio Reentry Week website and to attend some of the events so that you can understand what people go through every single day. Thank you so much.
Good evening, council. Thank you, councilwoman favors. My name is Mujedid Mohammed. I was incarcerated for 27 years. I've been home now for four years. Most of that time has been spent working at Impact Community Action as program instructor, self-sufficiency coordinator, and I now work in the Housing Navigation and Stability Department. I also work with the UP program with Judge Jessica DeVarga as a credible messenger in that program. And I've also founded my own nonprofit called the Restored Citizens Faith Foundation. And I mention all that to say that my life too, like Zach and Maria, is a testament of what restored citizens can do when they're properly supported, coming home. An analogy that I use a lot, I studied horticulture a little bit while I was incarcerated. And one of the things that I learned in studying horticulture is that when you move a plant from one soil to the next soil, if you don't know what you're doing, anybody who knows anything about horticulture, that plant can die from culture shock, right? Because it couldn't assimilate into that new soil. And that same analogy applies to individuals who are coming out. If they don't have the proper supports to assimilate into this free society coming out of prison, then they also die in the form of recidivating back into prison. So I, like Maria and Zach, I encourage you to continue to support individuals who are transitioning out of prison, and thank you for your support this evening.
Well, I could not think of a better way to really depict how important it is for this body to continue to support you all and the work that you all are doing to help the residents in our community navigate back into free society, as you said. And so I truly appreciate the work that you all are doing. I intended Reentry Week, and so I encourage you, if this message isn't specifically for you, please tell your friends, your family, spread the word. I will have the information up on my social media handle in case folks miss the link, which is www centralohireentryweek.com. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's favor, President Harden.
Adopted.
I'm moving quick because somebody's taken a bet that it'll take me forever, but these are important resolutions. Speaking of, one of our illustrious City of Columbus employees is retiring. So with that, I'd ask Assistant Health Commissioner Mike Fielding to join us at the podium, so that we can present Resolution 0071X-2022 to honor your distinguished career at Columbus' Public Health and for your service and dedication to protecting the health and safety of all Columbus residents. Mike Fielding has shown tremendous dedication to the City of Columbus through a distinguished public health career with 36 years of service. He helped lead the City of Columbus's response to COVID-19 and provided steady leadership and guidance during critical public health issues such as Ebola, Zika, and the opioid crisis to protect our community. Mike Fielding's distinguished public health career exemplifies a commitment to service and to protect the health and improve the lives of all Columbus residents. Thank you, Mike. I see that you have been joined by your colleagues, including Dr. Mashika Roberts. Dr. Roberts, would you like to kick it off, or Mike, would you like to kick it off?
Good evening, everyone. Hello, Council President Harden, Chair Favor, and all of you this evening. It is definitely a sad day for me to see Mike retire. He and I have been reminiscing over the last few weeks, as we've been preparing for this, that it's been exactly 16 years that we've had the pleasure to work together. I remember the day I met him, and he welcomed me into the Health Department and welcomed me as his supervisor with open arms and taught me a lot about Columbus and Columbus Public Health. And I say this from the bottom of my heart, Mike is the reason that Columbus was able to respond so effectively behind the scenes for COVID-19. Dr. Long brought him back to the Health Department right after 9/11, and he led and started our Office of Emergency Preparedness, which allowed us to learn incident command structure, have a phone system, and know how to work with our community partners to respond to emergencies like COVID-19. So I'm grateful that he waited till we got towards the end of this pandemic before he decided to hang up his hat. But he has spent 37 years in public health, and it is a retirement well-deserved, and I wish him only the best, but he will be missed, and there's no way that he can be replaced. We can just find someone to try to do his job moving forward. So with that, I will turn it over to Assistant Health Commissioner Mike Fielding.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Thank you, Councilmember Favor, President Harden, President Pro Tem Brown, and other members of council. First of all, I want to say thank you, because it has been quite the ride over the last couple of years, and I appreciate all your support, not only during COVID, but certainly many, many other. You're the best-looking councilmembers I've ever reported to. I hated to say that, but I had to say it. But just over the years, it's just been superb, the support that Columbus Public Health has received. And we've been through a lot, certainly over the last couple of years, but many years in the back. I'm trying to remember all the councilmembers back 37 years ago, but I know Michael Coleman is in there, and Andrew Ginther and others. But I couldn't do it without the folks that surround me. Somebody said a long time ago, surround yourself with good people, and that's what I did. That's something everybody should consider. And I think anybody considering a career, working in the City of Columbus, has been fabulous. 37 years, 33 with the City of Columbus. And I grew up on the west side of Columbus, and I was proud to be standing here today. West Side, go west side, for those that are in favor of the west side. But I want to thank you, and then Dr. Roberts, of course, 16 years. I mean, it's unbelievable, and to have... And to have her support, she's one that really got us through COVID. I think she, I appreciate your friendly comments as I'm standing here with no mask on. But you know, what are you going to do? But no, Dr. Roberts has been the savior for us, and so greatly appreciated. And I just want to say thank you.
Well, I think we all want to say thank you. We have, to the best of our ability, tried to demonstrate and convey our appreciation to the Health Department for the way in which you all led us through this pandemic. And so I am incredibly grateful for your years of service to the City of Columbus, and selfishly am sad to see you go, just as I transition into the committee. It's just not right. What are you doing in your second half of your career?
Well, certainly, as everybody says, spend time with family. I've got three daughters, one's out of college, two in college. But I'm going to do some part-time work. Anybody that would like to, a little advertisement. 614-27... I'll do some part-time work. If you pay me the right dollar, I'll be there. So thank you, thank you. Been the best-looking city council ever, ever.
I feel like my colleague to the right is going to feel some type of way about that comment because he's not here today. And Councilmember Brown is on video, so she's included in that comment. It's all of us here. Are there any additional questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I enthusiastically move for adoption.
Bangston, Burrosa D. Padilla Brown, Doran's Favor, President Harden.
You stop clapping now, thank you.
Finally, we have Resolution 073X-2022 to acknowledge April as National Fair Housing Month in the City of Columbus and to commend the Columbus Realtors for their efforts to promote housing equality. If I could have all the folks, we have quite a bit of a roster here to celebrate fair housing. Every April, we commemorate the passage of the Fair Housing Act in 1968. This year marks the 54th anniversary. The purpose of the Fair Housing Act was to put an end to inequities within the housing system and eliminate racial segregation in America's neighborhoods by prohibiting discrimination in the sale, rental, and financing of housing while requiring federal, state, and local governments to proactively dismantle the discriminatory structures that hold back people of color and underserved populations from equitable access to the neighborhoods of their choice. Unfortunately, we know that this is not the reality. Columbus, Ohio continues to grapple with housing discrimination and an immense racial and gender wealth gap, which promotes social, racial, and economic disparities across our neighborhoods. Last year, I sponsored the Housing for All legislative package, which included three pieces of legislation focused on dismantling the systems that have perpetuated racism and inequity within housing while working to advance fair, affordable housing strategies for all in our community. Included in the package is a ban on source-of-income discrimination, making it illegal for landlords to refuse to rent to a prospective tenant based on his or her source of income. Renter's Choice, which provides tenants with different options to pay their security deposit, removing a barrier to securing housing. And last, but certainly not least, is Rental Receipt, which requires landlords to provide a rental receipt to tenants who pay with cash or money order, establishing an important protection for both tenants and landlords. Since the passage of the legislation, the City of Columbus has partnered with Renter Mentor, the Affordable Housing Alliance of Central Ohio, and Cohere to conduct research and an education campaign in order to ensure that tenants and property owners alike are aware of their rights and are in compliance with this legislation. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Jerry Valentine and Carly Booz, who are leading the Housing for All campaign, to share more.
Thank you, Council President, Chair Favor, for allowing me to speak today. My name is Jerry Valentine, and I proudly serve as the founder and CEO of Renter Mentor, a local social enterprise company that has a mission to help connect people to affordable housing and other supportive resources. Tonight, I am speaking on behalf of the Housing Education for All team, a partnership that expands public awareness of the housing rights city residents were afforded by the Housing for All legislative package. We join you in honoring April as Fair Housing Month. This is both a celebratory and solemn occasion. It recognizes generations of struggle for fairness against systemic inequities that have long defined our housing landscape. For many lifetimes, housing was wielded as a tool for discrimination against racial and religious minorities, new Americans, seniors, and the disabled, women in the LGBTQIA community, and many others who merely sought a welcoming place to call home. The ghosts of these policies still haunt us, undermining housing stability for too many. But this month also commemorates monumental progress towards achieving those ideals who hold most closely. Columbus occupies a significant position in this march to equity. Through the resolution, actions of our local leaders, our region is distinguishing itself as a place where housing opportunity is tangible. Coupling significant investments in our affordable housing infrastructure with targeted policy innovations that protect residents from exploitative forces is a model for cities across the country. From preventing income discrimination to allowing tenants to exercise meaningful choice in how they pay their security deposits to ensuring that renters are not victimized simply for paying their rent in cash, Columbus is at the forefront of this important conversation. The Housing Education for All team is here to make sure these rights don't merely exist on paper, but are an active and powerful force in our daily lives. We offer free community workshops, an expert speakers bureau, civic education materials, and more to ensure our people don't simply know their rights, but also are empowered to use them. On the behalf of the Education for All team, including Cohere and the Affordable Housing Alliance of Central Ohio, we express our sincerest gratitude to council for advancing this work. Through partnerships like this and continued dialogue with respect for all people, we are confident that Columbus will continue to light a path towards shared prosperity for all. If those who are listening wish to honor Fair Housing Month in their own neighborhoods, congregations, and workplace, please feel free to reach out to me to continue the discussion. And thank you again for this opportunity to speak, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Valentine, and Carly, who has joined us as well. If you are a Columbus resident and you feel you are facing housing discrimination, have additional questions, or want to file a complaint, please reach out to the Columbus Urban League at 740-580-FAIR or fairhousingatcul.org. I'd also like to acknowledge and commend the Columbus Realtors for their efforts to promote housing equality. Founded in 1908, the Columbus Realtors is a professional trade association of over 9,000 real estate professionals engaged in residential sales and leasing, consultation, land development, and more. The Association aims to increase the awareness of fair housing issues, eliminate intolerance and bias behavior among real estate practitioners and the public. Fair Housing is such an important month, so I am truly honored to welcome the Columbus Realtors, President Sue Van Workman, and Columbus Realtors DNI co-chair Sharon Rigsby to provide some additional remarks. Ladies?
Thank you, Councilmember Favor and all the council members for this recognition and your ongoing commitment to housing equality. I am Sue Van Workman, and I have the pleasure of serving as president for Columbus Realtors this year of 2022. And I've brought with me Sharon Rigsby, and we have our treasurer, Scott Rabcheck, and we have Ian Thixton, who just shared with me he's been coming to council meetings since he was 10 because his mother used to bring him. But on behalf of the Association, I'm very honored to accept this recognition from Columbus Realtors. Our commitment to fostering an inclusive culture, one that values the diversity of people, cultures, ideas, and perspectives, is front and center as one of our key priorities to our strategic, long-range plan. As I said, I'm joined with Sharon Rigsby, co-chair of Columbus Realtors Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, and she's going to share a few words with us.
Thank you, Sue, and thank you again to our city council this evening. My name is Sharon Rigsby, co-chair of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, as well as a committee member for our Housing Affordability Committee as well. At Columbus Realtors, diversity, equity, and inclusion is not just a project for us. They are not just buzzwords either. It is who we are, and it is what we do. Our commitment is to cultivate an environment where we accept and celebrate the differences of everyone. As Realtors, we promote the benefits of homeownership and access to housing affordability products, and we would be glad, and quite frankly, honored to further partner with city council on these common initiatives. As Sue mentioned, diversity and inclusion is a robust part of our strategic plan. We have hosted several workshops with a focus on diversity and leadership. Here in Columbus, we helped establish the Hispanic Professionals Network and the Asian Real Estate Association of America chapter. Members of our staff are involved with Convergence Columbus, an initiative designed to increase homeownership among minority communities. We have diversity, equity, and inclusion articles that are published in our in-contract magazine on a consistent basis, and our website is pretty robust with resources and information all around diversity, equity, and inclusion in fair housing. I could go on, but I won't out of respect for time. But our efforts and our focus on fair housing for all is the goal, and our focus is to remain committed to this work for many, many years to come. I thank you again from myself, Sue, and Columbus Realtors. Thank you for this recognition, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you so much. And you know, I think that it is incredibly important that we have both groups up here together because addressing the needs around fair housing is truly going to take a collaborative effort. We have an affordable housing crisis, and we talk about that very candidly here on council. But the other piece of that is ensuring that people who have access to housing are not being unfairly discriminated against that, their right to be able to obtain said housing. And so we need you all to work on the ground and to work collaboratively with us at city councils. So thank you for the work that you do each and every day to serve the residents of Columbus. Are there any additional comments by my colleagues? Well, thank you all, and with that, I move for adoption.
Bangston, Burrosa D. Padilla Brown, Doran's Favor, President Harden.
See, I wore my sneakers for a reason today. Thank you so much, Council President Harden, and thank you to all the folks who participated in tonight's resolutions. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Favor. I have a couple resolutions myself this evening. I'd like to invite my friend Mallory Donaldson, Ms. Tanya Scott, and all those folks who are involved with the Black Girls and Young Women Collective to their podium. As I read this first resolution, which is 66X-2022, it's to declare April as National Child Abuse Awareness Month in the City of Columbus. Unfortunately, child abuse is present across Ohio and across our country, and has long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. We acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. So be it resolved by this council, the City of Columbus, that this council does hereby declare April as National Child Abuse Awareness Month in the City of Columbus. With that, I will turn it over to Mallory, and thank you for bringing young ladies down to be with us this evening.
Thank you, Council President Harden, Pro Tem Brown, Ms. Favor, thank you, Mr. Bangston. I just want to take a moment to thank you all for your consistent support of our Black Girls and Young Women Gender Expansive Youth here in Columbus. This evening, we have a few of our Black Girls and Young Women's Collective here to advocate for child abuse. So as President Harden mentioned, April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month. I can stand here and advocate as the Chief Program Officer of Advocacy, Public Policy, and Information at the Center for Healthy Families all day because I have that service and just that humble spirit to support our Black Girls each and every day. But it hits different when we hear it from our youth. So thank you for the opportunity to provide this platform for our girls to be seen and heard this evening. I will kick it off to our advisory council members.
Good evening. My name is Kenya Grace. My fellow advisory council members, Binsa Anjali and Suzanne Lee of the Black Girls and Women's Collective, and I are honored to receive this proclamation on behalf of the Center for Healthy Families. Even though we are receiving this tonight, we want to acknowledge that this will be used for National Child Abuse Prevention Month, which recognizes the importance of working together to strengthen families to prevent child abuse and neglect, specifically how it affects Black Girls. More than 7,000 Black Girls were referred to Franklin County Children's Services for report of abuse and neglect in 2021. The Center for Healthy Families, in partnership with the Franklin County Children's Services, is launching a public engagement campaign in April, recognizing Child Abuse Prevention Month and raising awareness about the issues of child abuse and neglect. The Center will collaborate with partners throughout the month of April to educate the public on child abuse and neglect prevention.
Educating and spreading the word about child abuse prevention lets your community know they can take action to strengthen families and help them achieve, help them thrive. April 13 is the date where Ohioans were encouraged to wear blue to support children, youth, and families in recognition of National Child Abuse Prevention Month. On behalf of the Center for Healthy Families, we are honored to receive this proclamation. Thank you.
Well, again, one, young ladies, thank you so much for your advocacy. It does help when you put a face to this work and really an understanding of who we're fighting for. So we're grateful for your advocacy, and thank you for coming down. Certainly, to Mallory, thank you for the work that the Center is doing. It matters, and this council stands shoulder to shoulder with you as we continue this work to end child abuse everywhere. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues?
I just wanted to second and commend you all for coming down here today. I think we often talk about leaders being leaders tomorrow, and I believe that young people can lead today, and you are examples of that. And so being able, finding a platform, finding the things that you're passionate about, and elevating your voice, not just for yourselves, but for other people, is incredibly powerful, and being here today is powerful. And I want you to continue to, encourage you to continue to use that power the way that you are today because it does make a difference. And so thank you for coming down here. Thank you for your continued advocacy.
With that, I move for passage.
Bangston, Burrosa D. Padilla Brown, Doran's Favor, President Harden.
Last and certainly not least, I'd like to invite Denzel Portis to the podium as I read Resolution 70X-2022. This resolution is important to me personally, but I think important to this council as we express Columbus City Council's strong opposition to Ohio House Bill 616 and to urge the state of Ohio and the General Assembly to defeat this bill. House Bill 616 restricts educational materials and discussions on diversity, equity, and inclusion while also limiting educational content on gender identity and sexual orientation. Legislation like HB 616 threatens to damage Ohio's brand, repelling prospective companies, employees, and current residents, limiting economic prospect. This bill is a solution in search of a problem in that it appears to establish restrictions on institutional practices that currently do not exist in the state of Ohio. The bill proposed is an assault on teachers and would subject local school districts to frivolous lawsuits. to frivolous lawsuits, removing resources from the classroom to pay for endless legal battles. This bill does not represent the values of Columbus, Franklin County, or the state of Ohio. So, be it resolved by the council of the City of Columbus that the Columbus City Council hereby expresses its strong disapproval of House Bill 616 as a proposal that only advances principles of discrimination and inequality, and in that the Ohio General Assembly should defeat this proposed bill and should ensure that the state legislator does not make any future attempts to constrain or censor education on diversity, equity, and inclusion, gender identity, or sexual orientation. I want to thank many folks who are currently working right now to defeat this bill. It is dangerous, not just because of its practical impacts, but because of the message that it sends to our young people, that they are not wanted, that they are not supposed to be heard, and quite frankly, that they're not supposed to be here in general. We have to stop this, and I, what frustrates me the most about this type of bill is that we are using vulnerable people to score political points, and I think that that is sick. And so, we stand with many others who are doing this work, who are fighting for our babies and for our schools. One of those, and not least, because there are a lot of folks working throughout the state on this, is Denzel with Stonewall Columbus, and so, I will turn it over to Denzel.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all so much for having me here, council members here and afar. I appreciate the opportunity to be in front of all of you. It's sad that my first time being in front of this council body is to speak against this proposed bill. My name is Denzel Portius. I use he/they pronouns. I am the executive director of Stonewall Columbus. I am part of the queer community. I'm a father, and I am dedicated to ensuring that this bill does not get moved forward. This moment in our history when LGBTQ identities are being attacked, in particular, our youth identities, and we must do the work of being supportive adults who understand their experiences. Children and young people are unable to create spaces for themselves. Adults have made it that way. We are in a period of our history when the spaces that we were created for young people to be able to be safe are under attack. Adults created gender constructs. Adults created racism, and now that we know better, we must do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Denzel. I would also note that today, council became in receipt of a letter that was signed by seemingly hundreds of local leaders and advocates from throughout the city about this resolution. We appreciate all those folks and their advocacy to this council and certainly to the State House. And again, we want to thank this, our delegation, our senators, and our state representatives from the central Ohio region who are actively working against this piece of legislation. Are there any comments or questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
That concludes resolution hour for the City of Council this evening. Are there any comments by our elected officials that may be joining us virtually or in person? Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent portion of the agenda? May we now have a motion to waive a reading of the titles of 30-day legislation? Is there a second? Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read the record ordinance numbers on 30-day legislation for tonight?
Economic Development Committee ordinance is 1039, 1040, 1061, 1062-2022. Small and Minority Business Committee Resolution 63X-2022. Technology Committee ordinance is 1045 and 1072-2022. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 979 and 1043-2022. Finance Committee ordinance is 1022, 1071-2022. Education Committee ordinance 988-2022. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 156, 647, 815, 829, 879, 891, 906, 907, 909, 931, 933, 951, and 975-2022. Public Safety Committee ordinance 903-2022.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent action. Will the clerk now read those into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 68X, 67X-2022. Economic Development Committee Resolution 60X-2022. Ordinances 926, 1063, 1064, 1067, 1089-2022. Small and Minority Business Committee ordinance 1100-2022. Technology Committee ordinance is 773, 774, 843, 880, and 1046-2022. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 516, 799, 831, 908, 916, 918, 921, 922, 946, and 960-2022. Neighborhoods and Immigrant Refugee and Migrant Affairs Committee ordinance 809 and 920-2022. Finance Committee ordinance is 788, 824, 898, 925, 971, 989, 1003, 1018, and 1019-2022. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is 150, 662, 1020-2022. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 924, 932, 934, 974, and 993-2022. Building and zoning policy committee ordinance is 1044 and 1060-2022. Housing Committee ordinance is 945, 984, 985, 1024, 1032, 1037, 1038-2022. Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee ordinance is 1065 and 1073-2022. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance is 849, 877, 883, 930, 956, 1069, and 1070-2022. Public Safety Committee ordinance is 789, 977, and 1059-2022. Environment Committee ordinance 899-2022. Administration Committee ordinance is 978, 980, 997, 998, 999, 1005, 1006, 1007, 1008, 1009, 1123, 1146-2022. And appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0088, 92, 93, 94, 95, 96, 98, 99, 100, 101, 102, and 103-2022.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I see that we have two speakers on the consent portion of the agenda. The first speaker to come before council is Mr. Nate Wilkins, speaking on ordinance 0984-2022. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to council.
First of all, let me say, I'm speaking probably for against or for this, but I have my reasons why. This is probably located in South Linden area on East 17th Avenue. Address is 1354, holding to the land bank. All I can say, you know, we talk about affordable housing, and here, I just want to identify with you. I don't know how long this property been in the land bank, but I can surely tell you, this particular home, if it sit vacant for, idolized for a very long time, I don't know why it was torn down, what was the reason why, but today, it sits as a vacant lot. Mind you, adjacent to that property, there was massive duplexes on 17th and South Linden. Once again, seem like we have a problem with affordable housing, but what frustrates me here in the city of Ohio area, we have massive duplexes that sit idolized and disrepair. People are crying about affordable housing. Three properties are located on 17th. One of them was torn down close to 17th and Cleveland Avenue. And here, I'm in opposition of this property is because it sits as a vacant land today. But here, we got two duplexes over there with four units that sit idolized, torn up, and disrepair. And here, again, we come time after time, and here, we talk about affordable places. If I want something in that lot, I want a house to be built that's affordable, affordable. Let me say that again, affordable. It sits as a vacant lot today through the city of Ohio area. I see people that's crying can't live from paycheck to paycheck. They got paid 10 times of the rent value to lay their head at night, and that what frustrates me so bad here. And we can't take care of what we have in our own house by leaving empty properties and empty lots un-idleized, and we can't go after property owners that sit on these properties today, don't do nothing with them. People are crying for some pension here now. We want affordable housing, less than $700 a month, probably close to $495 a month, under $500 a month. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins, for your continued advocacy. Chair or director, is there anything specific to this resolution or this ordinance that you would want to point to? You're good. Next speaker to come before council is Mr. Joe Motil, speaking on ordinance 1067-2022. Mr. Motil, welcome back to council.
Joe Motil, 167 West Cook Road, Columbus, President Harden, Pro Tem Brown, members of city council. I just want to say this, let's be honest about what this consent action ordinance is really all about. Approval for this application for placement of farmland in an agricultural district is being done to accommodate the current property owner of the 182 acres that are being considered later this evening to be rezoned to a limited manufacturing district at 6680 Lockborn Road. It's a rezoning that's going to allow for a developer to possibly build about 2.8 million square feet of warehouses. This ordinance is a clear sign that the outcome of tonight's rezoning has been predetermined and that the sale of the property to the developer will go through and the rezoning will be approved. This consent action application gives the current property owner certain rights to continue using the land for agricultural use purposes until development begins, and this is a deal that was most likely made between all parties involved. And I have to question also if this consent action ordinance would be considered non-controversial and routine, considering that it appears that this consent action ordinance is directly tied to tonight's rezoning ordinance 0492-2022, and that it is well-known that the Southside Area Commission is opposed to that rezoning. It certainly sounds controversial to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Motil. The chair or the director want to speak on this specific ordinance?
Thank you, President Harden, members of council. What this ordinance does is it creates an agricultural district designation per the Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 929. Has no effect on zoning, taxes, or other local ordinance. Does not preclude the owner from selling or pursuing development of the land. It's a five-year designation that provides some protection to farmers against utility assessment, nuisance, civil actions, and land appropriation. There's a couple of different parcels that are receiving this designation. David and Lisa Schatt are looking to designate 129.8 acres of farmland at 5950 Shannon Road and 43.1 acres of farmland at 3701 Bryce Road. The Peters Family Farm is looking to designate 182.4 acres of farmland at the east side of, on the east side of Lockborn Road, south of State Route 317, and 80-point acres located east of Lockborn Road, north of State Route 317. These are renewals, except for the addition of the 80-point acre, 80.8 acre tract that the Peters Family Farm is adding. We have, per the Ohio Revised Code, a public hearing was held on March 28th with regards to this, and these applications would renew three existing designations and establish, establish through Franklin County and provide one new designation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments, Chair?
Director, just to reiterate, this is a designation that has nothing to do with the zoning of the land, correct?
That's correct. This is, for that parcel, this is a renewal of the designation that already exists.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions or comments with the entirety of the consent portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion for approval by voice?
So, moved.
Clerk, please call the row by voice.
Mr. Bankston?
Yes.
Ms. Barrosa de Padilla? Ms. Brown?
Yes, with the exception of 916-2022, on which I'm abstaining.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Ms. Favor?
Yes, with the exception of ordinance 0773 and 0774, for which I am abstaining.
President Harden?
Yes, consent portion has passed with the noted exceptions. We'll now proceed with the second reading of 30-day table legislation. First committee to come before council is the Small and Minority Business Committee, chaired by Councilmember Bankston. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight, in Small and Minority Business Committee for second reading, we have ordinance 1074-2022 to authorize the city clerk to enter into a grant agreement with Orange Hearts for McKenzie Foundation to support the creation of a youth-focused entrepreneurship program and to authorize an appropriation and expenditure within the Job Growth Subfund and to declare an emergency. I'm going to ask Ms. Seneca if she would come forward at this time. I'm really excited, but also with a heavy heart, that we pass this legislation this evening and take it up. The Orange Hearts for McKenzie Foundation was created to commemorate the life and entrepreneurial spirit of McKenzie Ridley, who was tragically killed last summer outside the Far East Recreation Center. As mentioned above, the $50,000 in funding provided by this ordinance will be used to finalize and implement a youth-focused entrepreneurship program ran by the foundation. This program will explain the importance of entrepreneurship in a way that intrigues our youth, giving them the opportunity to see what their journey can look like, even when the odds are set against them. This is important because this program specifically will help those that are underserved with opportunities and resources, targeting young entrepreneurs in advance to turn their dreams into reality. I would like to give a special thanks to fellow, a few of my colleagues, Council President Harden, Councilmember Barrosa de Padilla, and Councilmember Remy for helping to fund this alongside my office. In chambers this evening, we have Ms. Seneca Ridley Turner, the mother of McKenzie Ridley, to speak more about the program and her organization. The floor is yours.
Thank you. My name is Seneca Ridley, and I just want to take this time to thank Councilmember Nick Bankston, President Council, Shannon Harden, and the rest of city council. So, I always start with this because I'm nine months out from losing my child, so I'm still very emotional. So, forgive me if I break down, but McKenzie, I always raised my kids to go by the acronym of JOY, Jesus, and there's yourself. So, we did a lot of service, always at the shelters, always giving back, and we spent a lot of time just, you know, teaching her about entrepreneurship. And very early on, she had a passion to create. She was an artist. She struggled with ADHD, and I always told her, that's not your disability, it's your superpower. So, she was always using her hands, and she found people, peers, who were like-minded, and they started in December of 2020, the Mac Marie and Friends Pop-Up Shop, where all these young entrepreneurs, all like 18 and under, would come together, and they would have a huge pop-up shop, and the city would come out, four, 500 people would come out and support them. And that's how she lived. She was an entrepreneur, she was a giver, and she lived with love. So, after her death on June 24th of 2021, we did start the Orange Hearts for McKenzie Foundation. People always ask me, why orange? Orange was her favorite color. So, the mission of Orange Hearts for McKenzie is to provide young disadvantaged entrepreneurs of color... of color services and resources to help get their business moving in the right direction. We equip young people with the values and vision to pursue their dreams by providing scholarships, tools, and technical, technical support. I just want to, again, say thank you for coming forward in this way as a city and saying that it's not okay what happened to McKenzie, and we're going to stand up and live in her legacy. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Deviyan Gregory, and I am a proud member for Orange Hearts for McKenzie. And I too want to just take time to thank Council, Council President Harden and Councilman, Mr. Bankston, because oftentimes, you guys are not recognized for the hard work you do. And we had many a calls really trying to, you know, get this off the ground, but one of the things that you committed to was that it was going to happen, and it happened. And for me, what it shows is that you guys are changing the narrative for our youth in our community. Studies show that programs such as this and mentorship not only decreases crime, but it also decreases incarceration rate. And so for me, that's important because we have a huge crisis that's going on in our city right now, and we're all trying to wrap our arms around it. But what we are, what you guys are showing is that you are the true leaders for our city, and through this collaborative effort, we will stop the crimes that are going on in our city. But you do that by offering opportunities. And so what you have committed to is offering opportunities for our youth by supporting this initiative. So we just say thank you, and we want to make sure that we continue McKenzie's legacy. Not only am I a board member, but I'm also a proud auntie, and I watched her grow from a young lady to entrepreneur. And so this is giving us the opportunity to continue her legacy. So thank you very much for not letting her death be in vain.
Well, ladies, let me just say, again, it's with excitement that we considered this tonight, but it's also with a heavy heart. But I just want to say that I've said it to you both before, you know, fifteen years ago, I was a victim of gun violence, and my parents were lucky, and you're not so much. But we are going to make sure that her legacy lives on. And as you said to me out in the hallway that she would be geeked by this opportunity, guess what? She is geeked, and she's in this space with us today. I can feel her presence, and she's so proud of you and is so thankful that you are moving her legacy forward, and we're going to continue to do that. What happened to her was a tragedy, and hopefully, this small investment, to your point, will give some of our young folks some hope, to put the guns down, to think beyond where they are and understand that their city cares about them, that somebody cares about them. And we will continue to fight for them every opportunity that we get. Are there any comments or questions from my colleagues, Councilmember Faber, and then Councilmember Barrosa de Padilla?
Councilmember Bankston, thank you for leading this piece of legislation this evening, but specifically to Mom. I just want to, there are no words, to express the deep sentiment, the deep sorrow that I know that you are experiencing at this time. When we all heard of this news, we were all heartbroken, and we have been heartbroken many times over the past several years. And it is all centered around gun violence. And gun violence awareness is recognized through the color orange. And every year, this body raises awareness. We have Mom Demands Action and all other types of organizations that come down, and we wear our orange ribbons. But this means so much more when we think about a mother that is standing here before us, still grieving, and will probably grieve the rest of her life over the unfathomable thought of losing a child in such a tragic way. I want to say thank you for not allowing your pain to prohibit you from living out a purpose. And I say that very cautiously because I don't for one second want to convey a message that this is how it had to be. It didn't have to be this way. But you are working hard, that not another mother has to stand before this body, making such a plea, or extending said gratitude. And so you have the commitment from this body to continue to support you all in this effort. Thank you for living out your child's dream and establishing other opportunities for young folks like her to pursue their entrepreneurial dreams.
Thank you. Councilmember Barrosa de Padilla?
Um, well, first, I want to say thank you for sharing your beautiful daughter with us. And I wish it was under other circumstances, but there's a saying in Spanish, because I feel like there are no words when someone has a grieving heart. There's nothing that anyone can say to make it better or to ease the pain. Only time and faith and love can do that. But in Spanish, there's a saying that says, lo siento, which means I feel this. And it's not the same feeling, pero, lo siento. But what I do know to be true is that giving life to others and pouring life into you or into others helps that healing process. And this legacy, this second chance that this will give young people, because young people always have choices, it's about giving them the right choices. And when we give them the right choices and we pour into them, then they can find their true destiny, they can find their power. And so thank you for creating that. In a place of hurt, you are showing love and pouring that back into others so that you are giving that gift to other people. And that is one of the most selfless things that we can do. And in a way, it's a selfish thing that we can do for the things that we get back when we do that. And so I just wanted to say thank you, and it was an honor to be able to support this. And I'm so excited when you come back, when we can hear from these young people and hear about their experiences and see the things that they will do that will enrich the lives of all of us. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for being so strong.
Thank you.
And know that we got your back. And with that, I move for passage.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Faber, President Harden?
All right. May I move to the Technology Committee? Thank you. Tonight in Technology Committee for second reading, we have ordinance 0994-2022 to authorize the Director of Department of Technology on behalf of various city departments to renew a contract with Converge One Inc. for maintenance and support services associated with the city's interactive voice response system to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code to authorize the expenditure of $183,579.61 from the Department of Technology Information Services Operating Fund and to declare emergency. This is year two of a five, year two out of five of an annual renewal for Converge One for a contract that was originally authorized on April 26, 2021. As mentioned, Converge One provides maintenance and support services for the Genesis Interactive Voice Response System, IVR, which various city agencies use the current IVR system, including 311 Public Utilities Building and Zoning Services and Technology, to help manage and direct incoming calls. This is waiving competitive bidding because it was a five-year contract. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Faber, President Harden?
Pass. Thank you, President Harden. That's all I have out of my committees this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before council is, waiting for an assist.
Public Service and Transportation.
chaired by Councilmember Barrosa de Padilla. The floor is yours, my friend.
I have two ordinances in Public Service and Transportation this evening. Ordinance 09572022 to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management to enter into a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, and yet to be named vendors for the purpose, or for the purchase of Rock Salt based on the terms of a cooperative purchase contract to be established by the Ohio Department of Transportation to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish purchase orders for Rock Salt, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,936,000 from the Municipal Motor Vehicle License Tax Fund, up to $13,376 from the Sewer Systems Operating Fund, up to $64,240 from the Water Systems Operating Fund, and up to $4,400 from the Electricity Systems Operating Fund for the purchase of Rock Salt to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance and the appropriate contract purchase agreement for Rock Salt and to declare an emergency. In English, what this means is that this ordinance ensures the Department of Public Service and the Department of Public Utilities are compliant with all Ohio Department of Transportation purchasing rules and regulations for participating in the joint purchasing effort for Rock Salt for the 2022, or the 2022-23 winter season. As you all know, Rock Salt is used extensively in the snow and ice removal operation in the city's roadway systems. Can I get a second? Thank you.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Faber, President Harden?
Pass.
Thanks. Oh, I needed to move for passage, that's what I did, I'm sorry. This has been a very emotional meeting. Okay. Ordinance 1025-2022 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreement for four four-wheel mechanical street sweepers from the Department of Public Service with Jack Donahue Companies Incorporated to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,425,717 for the Municipal Motor Vehicle Tax Fund and to declare an emergency. So these vehicles will become part of the city's street sweeping fleet. Each mechanical street sweeper lasts about ten years, and this ordinance proves the purchase or replace the vehicles that have reached the end of their useful life. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Faber, President Harden?
Pass.
May I move on to Public Service? Safety, Public Safety. Ordinance 0823-2022 to authorize the city auditor to appropriate and transfer funds from the Special Income Tax Fund to the safety voted capital fund to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to enter into a contract on behalf of the Office of Construction Management with Newcomer Concrete Services Incorporated for asphalt parking lot pavement restoration at the Fire Training Academy to authorize the expenditure of $1,630,000 and, six, $1,630,480 from the safety voted capital fund. So this project will restore and replace the asphalt parking lot pavement at the Fire Training Academy located at 3639 Parsons Avenue. This work will include a new concrete driveway plus other miscellaneous work along with parking lot relocations, light relocations. This is the first time the city has completely repaved this lot while the academy has been at that location, and some minor repairs have occurred over the years, but nothing of this magnitude, which is why the sum is so big. Do I have, are there any questions for my colleagues or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Faber, President Harden?
Pass.
Thank you. That is all from me.
The next committee to come before council is the Finance Committee chaired by Press Pro Tem. Press Pro Tem, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you to my council members for indulging the virtual presence here. Tonight in the Finance Committee, we have ordinance 910-2022 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a one-year contract with a one-year renewal option with Coupa Software Incorporated for the continuation of hosted software solutions and professional services related to the Acquire Marketplace software to authorize the expenditure of $207,375 from the general fund to waive the provisions of competitive bidding and to declare an emergency. This, currently, there are more than 440 contracts containing more than five million items in the electronic catalog. In 2021, that catalog was the source for more than 33,600 universal term contract catalog purchase orders totaling $83 million. The use of the electronic catalog provides efficiency for city agencies, and it ensures that the items purchased are actually on contract and that we're paying actual contract price. Since 2019, we've authorized yearly renewals. Acquire Marketplace with Coupa was the only known catalog with real-time search capability of vendors' online catalogs, and we've now come to the end of the current agreement. However, due to the critical nature of software services that support the catalog, the department is requesting that bidding provisions be waived to continue working with this provider while we select a new provider competitively. In line with the original terms, the city and Coupa can renew the contract for an additional year, and this one-term year is subject to mutual agreement and approval of proper city authorities. The new contract will cost the same as it did in 2021 and will expire next June instead of this June. By executing this emergency request, the city will be able to avoid a 5% increase over the previous contract and save $10,365.75. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Hearing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Faber, President Harden?
Pass.
Thank you, Council President. Next, we have ordinance 959-2022 to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management to enter into contract with the Franklin County Convention Facilities Authority for the purpose of distributing 2022 admissions tax proceeds from the Facility Stabilization Fund for the purpose of infrastructure investment in Nationwide Arena, to authorize the appropriation expenditure of an estimated $2.4 million from the Facility Stabilization Fund and to declare an emergency. Nationwide Arena is owned by the, excuse me, Convention Facilities Authority, and as its owner, the FCCFA is responsible for the long-term maintenance and repairs needed by the arena. Historically, the arena has attracted conventions, concerts, performances, which all support job creation and economic development. Its ability to do so into the future rests in part on whether it can remain a high-quality facility. So when the city created an admissions tax in 2018, it created a special fund into which tax revenues generated from ticket sales would be at the arena, would be redirected to the preservation of the arena. So in specific terms, 80% of the overall 5% on ticket sales at the arena are returned to it. It is with this yearly ordinance that the city authorizes the transfer of that 80%. This year, the estimated amount to be generated is $2.4 million. Any questions from colleagues? Hearing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Faber, President Harden?
Pass.
Thank you, President Harden. And then I'd like to go back to first reading for my final ordinance. Page six, Education Committee, that is ordinance 988-2022, to authorize and direct the Director of the Office of Education on behalf of the Office of the Mayor to enter into a grant agreement with United Way of Central Ohio to implement success by third grade and to authorize an expenditure within the Recovery Fund. I am very excited to announce that the United Way will be implementing success by third grade, an initiative that ensures children have the supports needed to achieve third grade reading proficiency. Research confirms that third graders who are unable to read at grade level by the end of third grade were four times more likely to drop out of high school. And 88% of students who failed to earn a high school diploma had struggled to achieve third grade reading proficiency. We know our youngest learners have been the hardest hit by the interruptions caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. An article from the Dispatch Today actually underscores the urgency of this work. It reported that during the 2020 to 2021 school year, bit of a tongue twister there, Columbus City Schools, which is our largest district currently, is currently seeing 54% of its third graders achieve only limited proficiency, the lowest performance band on the third grade reading test. Fifty-four percent. Fifty-four percent. Saying it again, so that that doesn't get lost. This funding could not come at a more crucial, more important time to support our students and their futures. Using a collective impact approach, success by third grade by the United Way is centered on parents, caregivers, and students. All of them need that support in order to actually change what we're seeing in the classroom. The United Way has been asked by community and school district leaders to be the backbone agency to shepherd the work, and this includes working with participants to identify gaps in service, understand potential solutions, align and support needed programs and services. In addition to serving as a bridge between community and schools, United Way will tap into the core skill into the core skills of communicating the issues and work to their network, rallying community support, bringing in resources, collecting and analyzing data, and improving the trajectory of young learners. This funding will support the staffing and expenses necessary to coordinate and align a community-wide undertaking of this magnitude. It's important to also note that we are not alone in funding this work. Our funding partners in the effort are Franklin County, Columbus City Schools, Alliance Data, and Cardinal Health, among many others. Do any of my colleagues have comments or questions?
Press Pro Tem Chair, I would just thank you for your advocacy. This would not have gotten done without the work of your office and so many others really leaned in. And to your point, it is timely. So just thank you on behalf of those 54,000 kids, our 50,000 kids or so in our district who could use these resources.
Thank you, Council President. Appreciate the support of you and this council in beginning this work, right? The work is begun. So first, I move to waive second reading by voice.
Clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Bangston.
I'm staying.
Ms. Burrosa de Padilla.
Yes.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Dorans.
Yes.
Ms. Faber.
Yes.
President Harden.
Yes, waived.
And I move for passage by voice.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row by voice.
Mr. Bangston.
I'm staying.
Ms. Burrosa de Padilla.
Yes.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Dorans.
Yes.
Ms. Faber.
Yes.
President Harden.
Yes. Ordinance is passed.
That's all I have in my committees. Thank you, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is there a motion to recess?
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favor, President Harden.
We are in recess. We will start zoning in five minutes. Good thinking.
And interim director Ann Arbery from the Department of Public Utilities have been sworn in. First, we have rezoning 0492-2022 to rezone 6680 Lockborn Road, being 180-plus acres located on the east side of Lockborn Road, 1,250-plus feet south of London Groveport Road from our rural district to LM Manufacturing District. The applicant is Pishal and Company LLC, care of Don Plank, attorney. Pros use is a limited industrial and commercial development. The city department's recommendation is approval. The developments commission recommendation is approval 3-1. The far-south area commission's recommendation is disapproval 8-1. At this time, we'll have a staff presentation. Mr. Dietrich?
Chair Dorans, President Harden, members of council, good evening. The 180-acre site consists of one parcel developed with agricultural uses and a cemetery in the R rural district. The applicant requests the LM Limited Manufacturing District to permit office uses, less objectionable manufacturing uses, and a limited number of more objectionable manufacturing uses at this location. The existing onsite cemetery will be preserved with additional access in accordance with the submitted site plan. The limitation text establishes use restrictions, including more stringent restrictions for the northwestern part of the site, and supplemental development standards that address building and parking setbacks, traffic access, and off-site improvements, screening, mounding, landscaping, preservation of the additional access to the existing cemetery, and a commitment to develop the site as demonstrated on the submitted site plan. The request is consistent with the South Central Accord's recommendation for light industrial land uses at this location, with the inclusion of additional mounding and evergreen landscaping along Lockborn Road and the southern property line, the preservation of the existing private cemetery, and the inclusion of traffic-related commitments requested by the Department of Public Service. City staff's recommendation is for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. Would Attorney Don Plank like to make a presentation at this time for the applicant?
That's a long walk.
[laughing]
Members of council, my name is Donald Plank. I'm the attorney for the applicant. My address is 411 East Town Street, Columbus, Ohio. I would just repeat basically what was said. I would point out that we do have staff's recommendation as stated. We do have the development commission's recommendation. Our uses that we committed to are in accordance with the South Central Accord. We met a number of times with the far-south area commission. I believe that going back and forth, even after that meeting, with changes to the zoning text, with changes to the site plan, and based on discussions with neighbors, with additional change to the site plan, that we've answered all the questions. And so I'd really like to defer and hear what the comments might be, and then address those afterwards.
Thank you, Mr. Plank. I believe we have a member of the far-south side area commission here as well to testify, Commissioner Bruce Miller. Mr. Miller? Thank you, Commissioner, for being here tonight. The floor is yours.
Chair Dorans, President Harden, President Pro Tem, members of council, good evening. My name is Bruce Miller. I am the recording secretary for the Far South Columbus Area Commission. Few items that I would like to address for council regarding this particular application. The Far South Columbus Area Commission met with the applicant repeatedly, both at zoning committee meetings and for repeated requests of the applicant, both for the original vote, which was eight to one for disapproval. And the applicant came out and met with us on multiple separate occasions after the vote of disapproval, requesting our input and also to request for us to revote on the application, which was denied. The reason for the denial was that in our constitution and bylaws, we have no methodology to do a revote on an application once we have made a vote. The vote was considered to be final, and we listened to his application, but we have no process to do a revote on a application once it is voted upon. But we did meet. We gave him the opportunity. And I will tell you that we have attempted to work with the applicant repeatedly. One of the areas of concern is the buffering around the cemetery. The applicant presented us with a plan. This is the plan that I am holding. It's approximately 100 pages long. This is the cemetery in question. There is a document that is not up on the computer with their site plan that shows that they are going to place a parking lot on one side of the cemetery and a retention pond on the other sides of the cemetery. We have a concern about that. Our concern is that on the far-south side, we have a problem with retention ponds. We've been approached by Steve Dunbar from the city attorney's office that there currently is a case, and I've provided that to Councilmember Doran's office, that is in environmental court in front of Judge Mingo regarding a retention pond problem. And we have currently eight others that are winding their way to environmental court with retention ponds. We're not saying that this particular site is going to have a problem. However, we have all of these properties that we have been presented with on the far-south side that have retention pond problems. We now have a cemetery that they are proposing to place retention ponds surrounding it and a parking lot. And while they have offered initially, it was a 50-foot buffer, then this report and the Ohio Historical Society, Krista Horrocks from the state, requested 100 feet. We've compromised at 60 feet. But we still have this water issue, and we've requested documentation from city drainage. We can't get a report about that. What we've been told is, well, we'll allow you to discuss this after this zoning is approved. And we have all of these questions about all of these other retention ponds in the area that are not working properly and creating problems for neighbors. The second issue that was brought up was the neighbor to, if you were looking at the site plan that is up on the screen currently, on the very southern portion, there is a Christmas tree farm that is an existing small business at a presentation on December 9th in front of the City Development Commission. So that small area on the very bottom of the screen, there is a Christmas tree farm located there. Now, there is mounding, and there will be evergreen screening there. But along the right-hand side of the drawing that you see is a set of railroad tracks for CSX that is very, very active. And under oath, the applicant testified that any surface water is going to drain to the south and to the east. Well, that would be to those railroad tracks. That is east, and south is that short little line that you see on the bottom of the screen. That means that any surface water where the pointer is now circling, that means that water is going to drain, surface water that is not contained in the retention ponds is going to drain to the existing Christmas tree farm. There is a gap that will be created along the ballast of the railroad tracks due to the gravel that goes away from the railroad tracks. Now, I'm six feet tall. That gravel comes to here on my chest, and the railroad tracks come to my eye level. You can't mound up to those railroad tracks because CSX has a right-of-way. So there's a gap that's going to be created along there between the gravel, the railroad tracks, and that property. So we have a concern, and we requested, how are you going to deal with any water that splits that natural gap? And that has not been answered by the applicant whatsoever. And again, we are told that sewer and drains, and the city is going to come out and meet with the area commission in May, and that's after you folks vote. And our concern has not been addressed with that. In addition, I have had numerous meetings this month where I've represented the area commission at the Sierra Southland Civic Association, the Marion Franklin Civic Association, and all of those organizations have provided us with letters of their disapproval. So community organizations in this area are not in favor of this rezoning or this zoning change. And we have a responsibility as an area commission to represent the citizens that have elected us to hold our offices area commissioners. And I will tell you that I've been in two rooms with over 150 people combined within the last two weeks that have told me that they don't want this, that they would rather see affordable housing or some other use. And we understand that we can't dictate to a landowner what they can and cannot do with their property as far as what they wish to put up there. But the residents down here have objected about drainage. They have objected about the cemetery. They have objected about the fact that this particular zoning and this particular site plan, they feel, is not right for their neighborhood and for this property. And we, as the area commission, have come forward and said, therefore, we object, and that's why we took the vote. And I have polled the area commissioners currently, because this has been going on for months. This has been a long and very protracted process. I appreciate Mr. Plank, who is here this evening. He has been engaging. I appreciate Councilmember Doran's office, Kevin McCain in his office. But if it were to come to a vote today, right now, we have 11 area commissioners, and the vote would be seven-four against. I appreciate your time, and I look forward to answering any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do any of my colleagues have any questions?
More for attorney to answer.
Then for Commissioner Miller. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We do have two public speakers also signed up to speak on this ordinance tonight. First, we have Mr. Jonathan Blavett. The floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, council. My name is Jonathan Blavett. I'm a retired Army officer. I was raised on an adjacent property. It's the lower left, pretty much that whole lower-left side over there. And I am set to later inherit that property from my parents. And I know what the outcome of this application is ultimately going to be. But I can still ask and hope that the city council will follow its own policies and guidelines and place this item in the zoning rejection docket because there are, quote, "unresolved issues." And you, quote, "instruct parties to go back to the drawing board and come to an acceptable compromise." That acceptable compromise was established over two decades ago in the South Central Accord, which specifically stated this property would have a 250-foot green space and is reflected in the city's own future zoning maps. The compromise even established how screening should be made 100 feet wide with a six-to-eight-foot berm with evergreen trees. Now, despite what Mr. Dietrich, Mr. Plank, stated, those are actually in the South Central Accord. This is not meeting the South Central Accord. Every single individual at all previous meetings about this have unanimously opposed this application. But they would be more likely accepting of the outcome if we did come to a, quote, "cooperative resolution of the dispute." Insofar as if this application is approved as it is before you, it lacks support from any adjacent property owners or nearby municipalities, and that should matter. The fact that it skipped being voted on by the Far South Area Commission and went to the city zoning board before it was voted on should matter. The fact that they want 40-foot-tall warehouses about 100 feet from residential property lines should matter. The fact that they refuse to add the required green space or a full berm facing all residentially-zoned property should matter. The fact they've started clearing trees and bulldozing a wetland area, and coincidentally, the aquifer has caused dozens of new springs to appear on my parents' property should matter. The fact that the plan is to level the entire site, most likely requiring the lower areas to be raised near the historic cemetery and opposite of my parents' land, inevitably impacting the Big Walnut Creek, should matter. The amount of non-porous surfaces far beyond recommended percentages for a lot, especially as the Big Walnut's four highest floods in the area in the past 40 years have all occurred in the past 24 months, should matter. And I just want to close with this personal anecdote. My military service left me with severe PTSD, an infliction that has had me isolating myself like a hermit for years, until I finally moved back here to my home. I've spent thousands of dollars and a similar amount of my own man-hours working to remove invasive plants and replacing them with native species, working to try to fight erosion caused by these similar developments upstream, and maintaining a system of cameras to monitor the absurd amount of wildlife that has been pushed to this small, little swatch of land by the incursion on their homes by all this development. This has been a labor of love, and I have not felt that level of peace since before my innocence was ripped away in Iraq and Afghanistan. And I am heartbroken that if this is approved as it is before you, right now, when I'm in those woods, I'm not going to be at peace. I'm going to be looking straight across at giant warehouses because there's not going to be that green space or the berms. My idea of coming home, living out my days in quiet solitude, are being ripped away, and our property's future uses are being restricted just so the applicant could squeeze another few hundred square feet of warehouses. I urge you to place this on the rezoning rejection docket, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Councilmember, favor?
I'm sorry.
Fine.
Well, first, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming down to provide your testimony tonight. You mentioned quite a few things that you believe we should be paying attention to in this specific application. Is there some meeting of the minds, if you will, where you would be comfortable with this project moving forward? So drainage has been mentioned quite a few times. The cemetery and not having proper, I don't know, barrier there?
And as best I can answer that, I mean, I can't obviously speak for all the adjacent property owners, and I fully can't speak for the property because it's my parents'. It'll be mine someday. God forbid, that's a long time from now. But I mean, honestly, my personal feeling is, again, the South Central Accord says that 250-foot green space, I mean, I have it, that section right here. And then it's supposed to have 100-foot-wide berm, undulating, six-to-eight-feet evergreens, which that will at least provide some screening of that, that offset, that berm with that. We all accept the future's coming, development's coming. That's not going to be a farm. I mean, the farmer obviously wants to sell it. It's not going to be farmed. We accept that something's going to come there. But we're just hoping that, you know, there could be some understanding. And again, the South Central Accord was the city, was the county, was the township coming together, and it was the best solution. And they said, let's put a green space and let's put a berm. So now we're looking at this, and they're not putting a green space, and they're not putting a berm. And it's gotten this far, and nobody's pushed back and said, hey, this is what we agreed upon 20 years ago. Why aren't we doing this?
Okay. So what I'm really just, I wanted to get at is, is it the project itself? Is it the use of the warehouses that are coming? Or would there be some pushback if it was housing?
I obviously think, because at one of those meetings, you know, somebody asked what was going to be the best use. And, you know, individuals honestly said that they wished it would stay farmed. And again, I understand it cannot stay a farm. Now, I can't speak, I personally, I don't know about housing on the other side. I mean, there would have to be studies done with the roadway. The road's not big enough to down it. So I think there's going to be pushback no matter what it is. But this, it's so intrusive the way it is. I mean, it's just giant, and again, the site plan's not up there. It's just four or five giant warehouses filling up the entire 180 acres. So, and like I said, there's no berm. You know, I mean, it does end, and on this map, you can sort of see it at the bottom, but that goes right across from my parents' house. So the rest of the property, again, where I love wandering in these woods and doing this stuff to get away, to get that peace, it's going to be looking straight at the warehouse. There's not going to be any berm. There's not going to be any green space, any of that. So, that's my thing. As far as the cemetery, I think they are doing, they have listened to a lot of the concerns in regards to that. And yes, that does very much hit me because that cemetery is right across from my parents' house. Most of the people buried there lived and died in the house I grew up in. So even though they weren't my ancestors, it is personal to me with that, but...
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for being here tonight. Mr. Dietrich, Mr. Blavell mentioned about the accord. I want to be sort of clear on this. You had mentioned in your comments that the site has in compliance with that, and we've heard just something a little bit different. So I just wanted to give an opportunity for the body to hear from you on that point before we go to the next public speaker.
Our staff review process involves our planning division comments. Our planning division create and maintain and interpret land use plans such as the South Central Accord. And they instructed and gave us language that with the 50-foot and the 100-foot setbacks presented to you and the plan and the uses intended, that they were in support and found it consistent with the plan.
Thank you. And that accord was adopted, if I remember correctly, in 2004?
I believe the land use actually may be from 2000. But yes, the latest amendment was 2004.
Thank you. The next public speaker we have signed up to speak on this ordinance is Mr. Joe Motil. Mr. Motil?
Joe Motil, 167 West Cook Road, Columbus. Chair Dorans, President Harmon, Pro Tem Brown, members of council. By the way, this is this green area, this is the 180-acre parcel of land that I referenced in my earlier testimony. For decades, the south side of Columbus has been the preferred destination of our local politicians and others to locate concentrated, undesirable industrial manufacturing that has had a negative impact on the health and quality of life of the residents in that community, of whom mostly are low-to-middle-income-class citizens. For example, inland products rendering plant, Georgia's Pacific, Technoglass, the trash-burning power plant, the city sewage treatment plant, to name a few. And although the construction of warehouses in and around the risk-free development area of Rick and Backer's tax-abated logistics center with a 1.6% vacancy rate may not cause similar environmental health issues as those facilities mentioned, the ongoing loss of farmland and trees that is being replaced with millions of square feet of warehouses and connecting asphalt for truck terminals also impacts the quality of life and environment of those who call that community home. In typical fashion, when a city hall favored developer and/or its zoning representative is applying for a variance or rezoning, they will use as a supporting evidence that a rezoning should be permitted based on a planning policy that is, in this case, 22 years old and probably somewhat outdated, but such as in the case of the 2000 South Central Accord. But of course, when neighborhood commissions and civic groups attempt to base part of their argument on this development plan, the applicant's attorney argues that the plan should not apply, should apply to their client and not that of the area commissions. The Far South Side Area Commission's disapproval for this rezoning was loud and clear. The additional loss of farmland for warehouse spaces adding further increased noise and heavier semi-truck traffic in the area, and just like the loss of the nearby 500-acre historic Hartman Farms to Google, this rezoning of 180 acres will likely have a negative impact on the encroachment of this historic cemetery that was mentioned earlier in this community, along with the potential impacting of two historic homes built in the 1800s. The continuation of additional asphalt and loss of farmland is forever increasing the potential of flooding in the area, which was also mentioned earlier. And with the applicant's possibility of constructing an additional 2.8 million square feet of warehouse space on this site, rather than repeal this tax-abatement enterprise zone, the Marion City Council, without restraint, will probably grant a 10-year, 75% enterprise zone tax abatement in this risk-free development area, thus further defunding public education and contributing to higher property taxes that are forcing seniors and other long-term residents on fixed incomes out of their homes. Let's just stick it to as many people as possible and their quality of life for the sake of capitalism and campaign contributions. I think it's time that city area commissions and people in the residents of these neighborhoods have a say in development, what occurs in their area, and we take a strong look at what's going on. And maybe occasionally, once in a while, let's favor the citizens of our neighborhoods when it comes to undesirable development in their areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Motil. Do any of my colleagues have any questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Motil? Councilmember, favor?
So, Mr. Motil, I'm wondering how you can reconcile the opposite. We often hear a lot of pushback when it comes to building affordable housing in our neighborhood, in different neighborhoods that might not be used to affordable housing. We call it nimbyism, right? If this legislative body listened to that pushback all the time, we would not be able to build a lot of the affordable housing units that we need to bring, need to build in our city. And so how do you reconcile that, the plea that you just made, that we need to, all the time, listen to the folks who may be in opposition to pieces of legislation that might come before this body? And then also the prior speaker who stated that it could be this project here or it could have been affordable housing. Really, the rub is that we don't want the land to be messed with. And so I'm just wondering how you can reconcile those two?
Well, first of all, I don't see where this particular project has anything to do with affordable housing. It has to do with warehouses. Okay? Secondly, and what you're saying about nimbyism, sure, I think the city government should be purchasing properties in desirable neighborhoods right now. With, if we had any more bond money, we could be spending it on that and holding on to those properties. So we could be building affordable housing. And if you want to tax-abate it, that's fine, but it's only going to be for 60% AMI and less. So again, and I think there are a lot of people that would support affordable housing in the type of neighborhoods that you are speaking of. I was at an event just last week with Columbus Housing Network through our area commission, and I have one of their properties right up the street from me, and I'm fine with it. And I've never, there's never been problems with it. There's an empty lot at the top of my street right now. Go ahead and buy it. Put affordable housing there. I'd be all in support of it. So again, I think it's just who you're talking to, where it's situated, and you need to start doing it.
We get that pushback all the time.
You got me on your side, Councilmember.
No, I mean, we get that, we get that pushback all the time. That's why the phrase nimbyism exists, right? And so I'm just going off of what you said in your testimony around the notion that we're not listening to the community, right? And so that was where my question was.
Yeah. Well, my concern in this case is the question when it comes to warehouses in general in this instance. And large, different types of developments as opposed, yeah. We're not talking necessarily about housing, but I understand what your question is. But in this instance, it's about warehouses.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Motil. Does anyone else have any questions or comments for Mr. Motil? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Plank back up for any comments after hearing the public testimony.
Members of the council, let me explain why this is a perfect use for this property. Not only is the client contracted by the green, but the client also already owns and is developing the property immediately to the north. That provides access to London Groveport Road. What that allows us to commit to is that there is no access from that green site onto Lockborn Road. So all the traffic will drive north and go onto London Groveport Road, in which my client has committed to putting traffic lights in, traffic signals in turn lanes. So what it does, it keeps the traffic away from the neighbors that you just heard from. There are 10 neighbors along the western portion of our boundary. The gentleman that talked about the animals, I met with his mother and father. That's why the green space comes down further. I also talk about the cemetery. That clearly was the biggest issue when we first met with the area commission. My client had a study done by a consultant, and that's the study that you saw up and that was referred to. And it should be known that the cemetery slowly was being reduced in size as farming continued, to the point where it was only half the perimeter of what it now will be because we've committed to putting and finding the perimeter, the original perimeter of the cemetery, and we're putting a decorative fence around that, and then 60 foot beyond that. So when they talk about the setback from Lockborn Road, because of the cemetery, because of the additional 60 feet, we are actually 325 feet from Lockborn Road before we can do any development. And so we're handling that as well. In addition, with this development, along with the property to the north, this client's investing over a quarter of a billion dollars in the city of Columbus. And we're doing it in a way that's responsible because not only are we not allowing access onto Lockborn Road, but we're also providing the setbacks. We're going to comply with the city of Columbus stormwater requirements, which, by the way, are the strictest requirements in central Ohio. And every community that I work in have adopted the city of Columbus's stormwater requirements, which is a compliment to the city and their steward as it relates to environmental. I know that there was other things raised. I can also tell you that in addition to light manufacturing being the suggested uses in the South Central Accord, the city of Columbus has invested a major trunk line that runs under a portion of this property with the anticipation... that runs under a portion of this property with the anticipation that they'd be tapping into this and it's part of the development of the city of Columbus. And with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Councilmembers, any questions for Mr. Plank?
I don't know. My question is probably more for utilities, and we talked about the stormwater mitigation piece. And it seems that that comes, that process comes after the rezoning or in that process. If someone from utilities or someone could just speak to that.
Councilmember Bangston, we're, we're going to have Director Aubrey speak to that here in a few minutes. Thank you.
And let me also respond to that, too. In, in terms of the process, you know, the developer will do enough engineering initially as a part of the zoning to know what they can and, and have to do. But they don't spend the money for the final engineering, which is extensive, until after they know they have the entitlements to allow them to go forward. And that's when, then that's when we submit plans to the city of Columbus on our stormwater and how that's going to be handled. And at the end of the day, the city of Columbus is the final say as to where that stormwater will run and how it's handled.
And then one more other clarifying question on the cemetery piece, because I know that was a big piece.
Yes.
It's my understanding that, that your client is not only want to protect that, but also provide an access point so that folks can actually go visit the cemetery.
Yeah, there, there's an existing drive that goes to the, to the north of the cemetery. We've committed to regraveling that, providing a parking lot. And because the parking lot wasn't existing, we're paving the parking lot and then doing a footpath to the cemetery, but then along with the perimeter fence, along with the 60 foot buffer, and then we'll maintain that cemetery as well. I mean, we're actually, if it would continue to farm, that cemetery would disappear because as the farmer continued to do his crops, it got smaller and smaller. He was actually farming over bodies, which will, which will never happen again.
Thank you, Mr. Plank. Anything else? Councilmember?
I have another question for someone else.
Okay.
You can go back.
Thank you, Mr. Plank.
Thank you.
So, we, we've, I think part of this application, we've heard from a number of public speakers about specific to the issue of potential flooding, the, the concerns that exist there. As Mr. Plank just mentioned, the additional engineering to get to a final site plan for that happens after the rezoning occurs. But one of the things I wanted to do here tonight, because I think that has been one of the chief concerns of certainly the area commission and, and other folks, because they feel like they have had issues in this area, is allow Director Ann Aubrey from Department of Public Utilities to talk about what that process is in general, not specific necessarily to this site, because again, the specifics of the site itself will dictate how that works to make sure that those things are mitigated and dealt with. But I think because, again, the area commission, we've heard from a number of folks, that this has been a particular point of contention through this process. So, Director Aubrey?
Thank you. Good evening, President Harden, Chair Dorns, other members of council. As you discussed, once the appropriate land use is determined, then we start to see the very technical drawings that relate back to not just stormwater, but all of the city departments and how they comply with the rules and regulations. As far as stormwater goes, not just on this site, but any of the redevelopments you're going to see tonight, the, as the property develops, I don't know what's going on with this microphone, as the property develops, the stormwater is maintained at predevelopment condition. So, as you're seeing the grass and the field there, as it redevelops, no matter how much impervious area there is, the water has to be detained to that predeveloped condition. And so, there'll be any number of devices that they'll use to maintain the stormwater. If there's any streams on the site, those have to be maintained in their current condition with a buffer as well.
Thank you, Director. And to, again, probably underline the point here, if an applicant refuses to comply with the directives of the department as it pertains to, to stormwater mitigation, what happens?
So, as you said, there's a site plan process, and their site plan will not be approved until they comply with the stormwater drainage manual requirement. So, in companion with the, with the site plan process, there's also construction drawings that are created, and both of those run in parallel. And until the construction drawings are signed, the site plan is not approved.
And the project therefore can't move forward.
Correct.
Thank you. Councilmember Barosa de Padilla, do you have a question for the director?
Not for the director.
Okay.
Might I add one? Because there was, there was some, some suggestion that there was a lot of opposition. I can tell you that the South, Far South Side Area Commission and at the Development Commission, there were only two people there speaking in opposition. I mean, and, and we accommodated their comments. One was about the cemetery and one was about expanding the screening along, along Lockborn Road.
Thank you. Do my councilmembers have other questions? Councilmember Barosa de Padilla?
And I have a question for the area commissioner, actually, if we could.
Yep.
And I'm so sorry, because this is, I think, the second or third time that we have met. And you tell me your name again, I will never forget it.
Commissioner Bruce Miller.
First of all, Councilmember Barosa de Padilla, you are welcome back at the Far South Columbus Area Commission anytime.
Thank you.
And correct me if I'm wrong, ma'am, but I believe you left our meeting to go pick up your child at a soccer game if, if the brain cells are all working.
Now you're just showing off. It was soccer practice.
And Councilmember Bangston, you were at the previous meeting prior to Councilmember Barosa de Padilla, and I would welcome any member of City Council that wishes to come down to the Columbus Fire Training Academy. And by the way, thank you very much. My back appreciates the approval of the repaving of the parking lot. The members of the Fire Academy appreciate it. We happened to meet at the Fire Training Academy. Bless you all. With that, I would love to answer your question.
So, can we go back to, you, I know that it was informal, the whole no revoting process is something else we could, we could revisit at another time. But when you said you took like an informal poll, the numbers went up in terms of more people in favor, correct? Did I, did I?
That is correct.
What was, what, if you had asked this question in your informal poll, what changed their minds? So, for the folks who were in opposition, who might have now be, you know, in favor of this project, what was the deciding factor for them?
The deciding factor for the individuals that changed their mind was the handling, so Attorney Plank is absolutely correct that there were significant considerations made to the handling of the cemetery property. He was very gracious in presenting, and Attorney Plank, correct me if I'm wrong, sir, but you presented actual photographs of the fencing that your client has committed to, to the area commission. The area commission was very appreciative of him taking the time to present the actual fencing that his client agreed to. He was also very upfront in discussing the addition of additional landscaping at the entryway, the parking area, the treatment that was going to occur of the walking path, and also the, I will use the term, the general treatment landscaping design of the area going from Lockborn Road to the cemetery. That did sway those commissioners in, in the informal conversation.
That's helpful. I don't mean to put you on the spot. I just wanted to understand.
To, to change their minds.
Yes.
Those, you know, in my conversations with those commissioners, the, the commissioner, the original commissioner that was in favor of it, who has always been in favor of it, is a, is a commissioner who was in, who is always in favor, who is very pro development, pro changing the status quo. The additional commissioners were as a result of feeling that their questions were met and that the cemetery was the biggest obstacle. The, the other commissioner was both cemetery and felt that Kevin McCain had answered both the cemetery and drainage question.
I'm sorry, didn't interrupt you. It's, so it, to be clear, it was not in opposition to the actual project, but the impact of the project in terms of, you know, some of the concerns that you addressed.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful.
Councilmember Faver?
Well, my question might have just been answered because that is what, I, I'm going to pose the same question that I've asked a few times now, if it's the actual project itself, or would we be having the same conversation if we were talking about housing or some other type of development? I don't know what else it would be, but yeah.
To answer your question, no, you wouldn't be having that, going to go at it a little different way. There, I have not heard necessarily conversations saying that anyone on the area commission is opposed to warehouses. No. Interestingly enough, Councilmember Faver, if you take a look at the Far South Columbus Area Commission, I think that our record, you know, you, you mentioned affordable housing. I'm counting on, in my head, because I am the recording secretary, we have sent to this city council five, and I believe currently we have two or three more affordable housing communities at 60% or loader, lower AGMI that are currently working their way either through the OFA process or other processes to be approved eventually, because as you're well aware, they have to go to OFA, get their approval, then they come back. I have a background in real estate as well. I'm a former member of the Columbus Board of Realtors before I retired, so I was very pleased to see them here this evening. But we don't have, you know, I, I think it's something very unique to the Far South Columbus area. We actually are very much have community support for affordable housing. So, had that conversation been flipped, it wouldn't have been an issue. But no, there has not been an outcry that this is necessarily, you know, a large scale outcry. Have there been a few? Yes. Is there a large scale? No. It is more about some of the treatments, drainage, cemetery.
Okay.
Things of that nature. There was a traffic study that was done. Mr. Plank was very gracious in providing the information about that traffic study. There were some objections until that was released. Those objections evaporated once Mr. Plank graciously shared the data on the traffic study, and those objections went away.
Okay. That's very helpful. That's very helpful information.
As, as information was released, some of the, some of the residuals disappeared, and these are the remaining ones.
Okay. Thank you. That is very helpful information.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate you being here to, to start, start this piece of legislation. Appreciate you be here to be at the end of it. So, thank you very much, sir. So, I want to thank my, my colleagues for the, for the discussion here tonight. For myself, as the chair of the committee, we have worked with my office, with the area commission, with neighbors countless hours on this specific project. I think we've identified from the beginning, the cemetery was a significant issue specifically around the area commission. I think we've had good resolution to that. I think we've talked about quite a bit here this evening around the, the flooding issues that I think are concerning to the commission, and we have had extensive discussions with the Department of Public Utilities about having representatives out to the commission here soon to, to address some of those things. As Director Aubrey talked about, the process that exists to make sure that, again, the, the stormwater is at predevelopment level, to make sure that there's not additive to the concerns that are already, that are there. And per the department, it is their position that this is in a, a development is in accord, is, is in compliance with the accord that was referenced earlier. Appreciate everyone who was here tonight to, to, to voice on this. I think we've made substantial progress compared to where the, the applicant was at the beginning of this process to where we're here tonight, specifically around the issues that I've mentioned. So, I think at this point, I, as the chair of the committee, I'm comfortable moving forward. But before we take a vote on this ordinance or any other, I want to have the clerk read the numbers of legislation, Zone Committee, this evening, that will require waiver of second reading.
Ordinance number 492, 941, 943, 991, 942, 944, 990, 992, 1014, 1026, 1027, and 1029, 2022.
Thank you. Now, I move to waive second reading on those items just read.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorns, favor, President Harden.
Waived.
Now, now I move for passage as amend, or I move to amend ordinance 0492 as submitted to the clerk.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorns, favor, President Harden.
Amended.
And now I move for passage.
Second. Let me say real quick, Councilmember Dorns is the new chair of this committee, and just to take it behind the veil a little bit, I talk to each council member each week about their committees. This project has come up every week for the last month or so that I have talked to Councilmember Dorns. We don't always love the outcome, but one thing that we stress in this council is we respect the process. And I think that what you saw this evening in the discussion, but more so in the deliberation between the chair's office, the applicant, and the community, most specifically the community, there was substantial work done to make a project better and more responsive to the community. And so, we might all not agree with where we get to, but I hope that we can appreciate the process. And with that, clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Browns, Dorns, favor, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance number 0941-2022 to rezone 1300-1312 King Avenue being .99 plus acres located on the north side of King Avenue, 200 plus feet west of Northwest Boulevard from C4 Commercial District, the AR2 Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Plaza Properties, care of Jackson Reynolds Attorney. The proposed use is to conform an existing multi-unit residential development. City Department Recommendation is Approval. The Development Commission Recommendation is Approval 6O. Fifth by Northwest Area Commission Recommendation is Approval 7O. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorns, favor, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have ordinance number 0943-2022 to rezone 5719 West Broad Street being 3.96 plus acres located at the south, southeast corner of West Broad Street and Gala, or Galloway Road from CPD Commercial Plan District to AR1 Apartment Residential District. The applicant is National Church Residences, care of Matthew Bearline. The proposed use is a senior housing development. The city's Department Recommendation is Approval. The Development Commission Recommendation is Approval 6O. Westland Area Commission Recommendation is Approval 84. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorns, favor, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have ordinance 0991-2022 to rezone 910 Dennison Avenue from being .21 plus acres located on the northeast corner of Dennison Avenue and West First Avenue from ARLD Apartment Residential District to ARO Apartment Office District. The applicant is Simplified Living Architecture, care of Heidi Boyard. The proposed use is a mixed use development. The city department Recommendation is Approval. The Development Commission Recommendation is Approval 32. Victorian Village Commission Recommendation is Approval 3O. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Browns, Dorns, favor, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance number 0590-2022 to rezone 7272 Huntington Park Drive being 5.04 plus acres located on the east side of Huntington Park Drive, 1300 plus feet southeast of Horizon Drive from CPD Commercial Plan Development District, the LAR2 Limited Apartment District. The applicant is Diversified Acquisition LLC, care of Rebecca Mon, attorney. Pro's use is a multi-unit residential development. City Department's Recommendation is Approval. Development Commission Recommendation is Approval 5O. Far North Community Coalition's Recommendation is Approval 72. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to take this from the table.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Browns, Dorns, favor, President Harden.
Removed.
Next, I move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Browns, Dorns, favor, President Harden.
Amended.
Finally, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Browns, Dorns, favor, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. We'll now move into the council variances for this evening. First, we have council variance 0942-2022 to granted variance, provisions of Section 3312.21 AD, landscaping 3312.27, parking setback line 3312.49, minimum number of parking spaces required 3333.23A, minimum side, minimum side yard permitted, and 3333.24 rear yard of Columbus City Coast. The property located at 1300-1312 King Avenue to permit reduced development standards for an existing multi-unit residential development in the AR2 Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Plaza Properties, care of Jackson Reynolds Attorney. The proposed use is reduced development standards for an existing multi-unit residential development. City's Department's Recommendation is Approval. Fifth by Northwest Area Commission Recommendation is Approval 7O. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Browns, Dorns, favors, President Harden.
Accepted.
Thank you. Next, I move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorns, favor, President Harden.
Adopted.
And finally, I move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston. Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Browns, Brown, Dorance, favor President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you. Now I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have variance 0944-2022 to granted variance provisions of section 3309.14 height districts, 3312.49 minimum number of parking spaces required, and 3333.18 building lines of Columbus City Coast. The property located at 5719 West Broad Street to permit reduced development standards for a senior housing development in the AR1 Apartment Residential District. The applicant is National Church Residences, care of Matthew Bearline. Proposed use is a senior housing development. City's Department Recommendation is Approval. Westland Area Commission Recommendation is Approval 84. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Second.
Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor President Harden.
Accepted.
Next, I move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings, findings of council.
Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor President Harden.
Adopted.
And finally, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have variance 0990-2022 to granted variance provisions of section 3332.035, R3 Residential District, and 3312.49C, minimum number of parking spaces required, the Columbus City Coast. The property located at 1816 Oak Street to permit a hair salon with reduced parking in the R3 Residential District. The applicant is Kieran Smith. The proposed use is to convert a detached garage into a commercial hair salon. The City's Department Recommendation is Approval. The Near East Area Commission Recommendation is Approval 12O. At this time, we will have a staff presentation. Mr. Dietrich.
The site consists of one parcel developed with a single-unit dwelling in the R3 Residential District. The requested council variance will permit the existing detached garage to be converted into a four-hundred-and-forty-square-foot hair salon. A council variance is required because commercial uses are not permitted in the R3 District. Included in this request is a variance to reduce the required number of parking spaces from four spaces to two spaces. The site is within the planning boundaries of the Near East Area Plan, which does not contain a specific land use recommendation for this location, but does provide guidance for non-residential uses within residential areas. Being that Oak Street is a mixed-use corridor and that the proposed use is of negligible intensity, provides a community service, is located to the rear of the site, and is confined to the existing footprint of the detached garage, staff recommends approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. Would the applicant or their attorney like to make a statement at this time? Is Mr. Kieran Smith there? Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith, for your comments, I need to swear you in since this is a council variance. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer to the pains or penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make a short statement. Just wanted to clarify that although this is a, for a commercial variance, it will just be a single user. It will be the resident that lives in the, the house in front that will be using. This is her personal hair salon. Right now, she currently rents a space that is becoming cost prohibitive. And as well, you know, there's a lot of other professions, mine included, as an architect, that we are already allowed to work from our homes in any sort of form. So this is just going through the formal process to allow that to happen for her. As far as the parking variance goes, we will, meeting the four-to-two requirement, just want to state that, you know, as having one client at a time that to work on, there will be no more than two cars in like a ten-minute window of transfer that will be minimal impact to the site as well. So with that, I look forward to any comment, and we'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments?
Just on that, that point, so there is going to only be one chair, per se?
Right. So our current plan that was approved by NEAC only has one chair in there. It has a one ADA accessible bathroom. That is really it, and she is making effort to recline the entire building, repaint, and just really pick up the appearance of the entire building. The inside as well will be renovated.
Got it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, sir. We do have two speakers who signed up to speak in opposition to this council variance tonight. First, we have Ms. Beverly Hodge. Ms. Hodge, thank you for coming down this evening. Since it's a council variance, I'll need to swear you in, so if you wouldn't mind raising your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer to the pains or penalties of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Ms. Hodge, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Chair, and members of the zoning committee, and other esteemed members of the community. My name is Beverly Hodge. I am seventy-nine years old and a Columbus native. My father purchased the property at 1830 Oak Street in nineteen fifty-seven, and it has been in my family for sixty-five years. Aligning the zoning variance will open the floodgates and forever change the character and nature of this neighborhood. There's a reason this neighborhood is only zoned for residential purposes. Granting a variance will alter property values and the quality of life for the residents. Moreover, this variance financially benefits the applicant while causing immediately, immediate and lasting harm to multiple property owners. It is a quiet residential neighborhood where families come to thrive without having the interference. Concerns or negative impact of commercially zoned areas that have an increase in litter, noise, traffic, limited parking space, and crime. Hair salons attract crime because they are predominantly cash-only businesses with locations that criminals target under the belief that customers and operators have large sums of cash. If this variance is permitted, there seems to be little safeguards or measures to protect residents and their families. There are many senior citizens in the immediate radius of this proposed project that would be left vulnerable with no recourse. Most importantly, the application is flawed on its face, and it contains falsehoods and misrepresentations. It should be rejected for the following reasons. Number one, the application states that the owner will be the only one providing services in the hair salon. According to the Franklin County Auditor, there is only one owner of this property, and it is Lucille Freeman, whose address and record is located in Dayton, Ohio. According to the Ohio State Cosmetology and Barber Ford, there's no record of a Lucille Freeman ever being granted a license. The owner appears to be a non-residential property owner. It appears that this property is an investment property. The variance application lists the owner as both Lucille Freeman and Rhonda Barber. The telephone number and email address listed on this variance application for the owner belongs to Rhonda Barber and not the owner. It appears that person seeking the variance is a non-owner who clearly does not hold the same interest in preserving the integrity and historic landscape of this neighborhood. Although the application states that the owner will have only one client during daylight hours, the nature of this business relies heavily on human behavior and the behavior of others. It is well-known that stylists' frequent appointments and clients may arrive later than scheduled. Procedures may take longer than anticipated. This directly correlates with traffic, noise, parking, and is disruptive to the overall flow of the neighborhood. Random clientele coming to the property for commercial transactions have no interest in maintaining the residential character of the neighborhood or controlling disruptive behaviors. In closing, I would like to express my disappointment that the notice received for this meeting was not sent to all neighbors who would be affected by the alley traffic. As written implies that the hair salon would be located in the residence, as opposed to the actual location in the standalone garage structured next to the alley. Thank you for your time and consideration. When I received the letter, I assumed it was to be in the house, which, you know, someone can do hair in the home, okay? I get my nails done at someone's home. But this, this, this is a commercial building in the alley, which would affect traffic in the alley, and all the neighbors that have garages in their backyard faces the alley were not notified in that block. And as I say, the application stated that the owner would be the one doing, only one doing the hair. It's a hardship. Evidently, this is a tenant or someone. He said he just stated resident. This is not the owner, because according to, and I had attorney look at the paperwork. According to the Franklin County Board, there's no license for Ms. Lucille Freeman, the owner.
Thank you, Mr. Ms. Hodge. Do my colleagues have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Any questions?
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am. Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Diane English. And Ms. English, when you are at the podium, I'll need to swear you in as this council variance. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer to the pains or penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Floor is yours, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Diane English, and I live at 1826 Oak Street. I am opposed and against this variance to permit the hair salon and the reduced parking. I understand that, you know, it's a salon that's supposed to be in the alley, but our alleys aren't that wide, and it's constant, it's, they're narrow, and, and the alley itself does not leave for much room or traffic when you're getting in and out of garage and when the trash trucks are coming down. I have lived at 1826 Oak Street since nineteen eighty-six. Before purchasing my home, I lived at 1806 Oak Street with my husband's grandparents. We bought the house because it was a truly a family neighborhood, with families raising children in about every home. Yes, times have changed and things have changed, but I still feel safe in my neighborhood because it's still a neighborhood. I do know most of my neighbors. I do not know all of them since things have changed, but we still have a neighborly feel. People speak to people, people walk their dogs, things are constantly going on, but you still have that neighborly, safe feeling. My grandson, when I have him, goes across the street to play with the neighbor's grandson. I'm concerned that if you start having commercial and you have outside people that nobody knows that's not related to anybody, that there's a threat to your neighborhood, that you can't let your children just be out there, because anybody and everybody is coming and going. The way we do parking on the neighborhood is there's basically two cars per house in front of our house. Most of the people park in front of their house. If those parking spaces are designated for the salon or something else, it will knock families out of being able to park in front of their house. It will also knock some of us seniors to maybe not be in front of our house and have to carry our groceries from down the street because there's somebody that has taken our parking space. You know, we try to, like I say, just kind of look out for each other. Even when neighbors are having family or friends over, they tell them, you can't park there. You know, that's the English's parking spot. And that's what a neighborhood is. That's what a family atmosphere is, and I just have fear that we may lose that. Like I say, I just, you know, just want to emphasize that part of what Oak Street is and what Oak Street has been for the over thirty years that I have been there. I'm concerned when, like, Near East Area Commissions make approvals and make statements for residents and never say anything to the residents. I learned about this the middle of last week when I got the notice, but I don't understand how the commission can speak for me and not notify me or not notify the people who are directly impacted until it's almost a done deal. And I wish that somehow someone could look at that, because they speak for us, but they don't talk to us. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. English. And I do want to mention on that notification, we are working to, with the Department of Building and Zoning Services to be able to place yard signs on some of these properties so that, again, residents can see those. And we're working with Chair Barrosa, Deputy of the Neighbors Committee about how we can better make sure that our commissions are alerting residents to their meetings themselves in which things are being considered for votes. So two very worthy points, and thank you for being here tonight.
Oh, thank you, yes.
Applicant, Mr. Smith, would you like to provide some rebuttal?
So I, I think the, I want to clarify something first before we go into some of the other comments that, about the ownership question. Rhonda Barber here is one of the current tenants of the house. It is her partner, who the name is in the house, or name is on the, the formal zoning and everything. She, it was formerly in her name. It was redone for loan purposes. She's a twenty-five-year resident of this house, and she is currently registered as a hairstylist. Just wanted to let that, leave that out there as well. So if you have any questions for her, too, she is here to answer those. As far as the, the garage, I, you know, I heard a concept or a comment of that this is, you know, a garage, it's not suitable for a salon. It is going to be entirely finished out like an occupiable house. It's not going to be a warehouse. It is going to have drywall, it's going to have, be insulated, it's going to have HVAC units, it's going to have a restroom, it's going to have everything that your hair salon would, that you'd go to down the street. As far as commercial user, this is, as I said, somebody that's been here for twenty-five years in this house. She is not hiring anybody to work here. This is just a way for her to not have to pay a rent at a hair salon. And also, the last thing I just want, want to mention as far as the high concern of, you know, people unknown coming to the neighborhood and, and things like that, these are clients that she knows. They're not people, it's not different people coming in all the time, they're repeat clients. And then I just also wanted to add as well that the trolley barn is on Oak Street down the street, and that is already adding to that. So there are people, I imagine people that are going to be going to the trolley barn already parking down here, maybe not that commonly, but I've been down there multiple times, and Rhonda can attest this as well, that I don't believe there's any parking issues during the day. And I think the latest clients you have would not go too far in the evening past maybe seven o'clock, eight o'clock at the very latest. So I hope that clarifies any comments from the citizens, but if you have any questions for me, let me know, or for Rhonda.
Thank you. Do my colleagues have any questions?
Just one question or comment, I mean, but clearly from the site plan, it looks like there's going to be onsite parking that will not impact the right-of-way of the alley. Is that?
There is no parking the right-of-way. This is all on property.
Okay.
So that one, that one spot is just going to be a carport for her personal vehicle, and that is to alleviate, because right now, they do not park in the garage, they park both their vehicles on the street. So that was our way of accommodating that, so that her personal vehicle can be off the street, freeing up theoretically another parking spot. And we also, just to try to meet these requirements of off-street parking, we added that parallel spot. I don't think it'll be used. I think anybody that parks will be parking right in front of our house as well. So, and, you know, to that comment of the traffic down the alley, it's really just going to be one car at a time. It is not something where there's a stream of five vehicles coming down, because there's five different hairstylists getting switched out as far as that concern goes.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much for your testimony. I, I think that there is plenty, I think, from the testimony we've heard with some of the members of the public tonight, I think with some meetings with my office, with the applicant, I think we'll be able to resolve these issues very, very easily. So at this time, I'd like to move to table this legislation indefinitely, so that we can have some meetings over the next couple of weeks and just get some of these things resolved, just to make sure that everyone's on the same page. The interaction we've had thus far, I think everyone wants to be a good neighbor and, you know, to be a, you know, business owner in this area, and I think making sure we've got the opportunity to talk with long-term residents about the specific plans and make sure they're comfortable with it, I think would be, you know, a good thing to do in this case, so that everyone, you know, feel, feels like they're on the same page, because as Council President mentioned, process is really important here, so we just want to make sure that if we're able to address these concerns, which I think we will be able to, that we're, we're having a good process here. So with that, I'd like to move to table this legislation indefinitely.
Second.
Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor President Harden.
Table.
Thank you. Next, we have variance 0992-2022 to granted variance provisions of section 3333.04, permitted use in the ARO Apartment Office District, 3312.21 AD landscaping and screening, 3312.27, parking in setback lane, and 3333.24 rear yard of Columbus City Coast. The property located at 910 Dennison Avenue to permit a use, mixed-use development, reduced development standards in the ARO Apartment Office District. development, reduced development standards in the ARO Apartment Office District. The applicant is Simplified Living Architecture Care of Heidi Boylan. They propose use as a mixed-use development. City Department's recommendation is approval. Victorian Village Recommendation is approval for O. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Second. The row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Accept it.
Thank you. Next, we, I move to adopt the findings of staffs as the findings of council.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Adopt it.
And next, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have variance 1014-2022 to grant a variance provisions of Section 3332.3039, R4 residential, residential district, 3312.21B landscaping and screening, 3312.29 parking space, 3312.49 maximum number of parking spaces required, 3332.15, R4 area district requirements, 3332.25 maximum side yard requirements, and 3332.27 rear yard of the Columbus City Coast. The property located at 89-93 Chicago Avenue to permit a two, three-unit dwellings on a lot with reduced development standards in the R3 residential district. The applicant is Franklinton Rising, care of Jeffrey Brown Attorney. Propose use as a two-unit, two, three-unit dwelling. The City Department of Recommendations is approval. The Franklinton Area Commission Recommendations is approval unanimous. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Accept it.
Next, I move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Next, I move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Amend it.
Next, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have variance 1026-2022 to grant a variance provisions of Section 3332.037, R2F residential district, 3312.49 minimum BR, minimum number of parking spaces required, 333, 3321.05B2 vision clearance, 3332.05A area district lot with requirements, 3332.14, R2F area district requirements, 3332.22 minimum building lines on lot corners, 3332.25 maximum side yard required, 3332.26 minimum side yard permitted, and 3332.27 rear yard of Columbus City Coast. The property located at 199-201 East Parkinson's Avenue to permit a two-unit dwelling, a single-unit carriage house on the same lot with reduced development standards in the R2F residential district. The applicant is John Foreigner, care of Dave Hodge Attorney. The proposed use of a two-unit dwelling with a single carriage house. City's Department's recommendation is approval. The Columbus City Area, Area Commission's recommendation is approval at 11O. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Accept it.
Next, I move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Next, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have variance 1027-2022 to grant a variance provisions of Section 3332.035, R3 residential districts of the Columbus City Coast. The property located at 1522 East Blake Avenue to permit a parking lot with the R3 residential district. The applicant is Matthew Thomas. Propose use as a parking lot. City's Department of Recommendation is approval. South Linden Area Commission Recommendation is, is approval unanimous. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Accept it.
Next, I move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Adopt it.
I move, and now I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have variance 1029-2022 to grant a variance provisions of Section 3356.03, C4 permitted uses, and 3372.607C landscaping and screening of the Columbus City Coast. The property located at 3374 Sullivan Avenue to permit storage and reduce development standards for an automobile repair facility in the C4 Commercial District. The applicant is Michael Shift, care of Craig Moncrief Attorney. The proposed use is storage in conjunction with an existing automobile repair facility. City's Department Recommendation is approval. Greater Hilltop Area Commission Recommendation is approval 132. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as, as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Accept it.
Thank you. Next, I move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Now I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have variance 0591-2022 to grant a variance provisions of Section 3312.49, minimum numbers of parking spaces required, 3321.01 dumpster area, and 3333.255 perimeter yard of Columbus City Coast. The property located at 7272 Huntington Park Drive to permit reduced development standards for apartment complex in the LAR2 Limited Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Diversified Acquisitions LLC, care of Rackamott Attorney. Propose use as a multi-unit residential development. City's Department's Recommendation is approval. Far North Community Coalition's Recommendation is approval 72. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move to take this ordinance from the table.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Removed.
Next, I move to, I accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Accept it.
Thank you. Next, I move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Next, I move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Amend it.
And now move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Council President, I need to, I have a bit of a housekeeping. I need to revisit ordinance 0942-2022. First, I move to reconsider.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Reconsidered.
Thank you. I now move to withdraw the amendment.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Drawn.
Thank you. And now I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Passed.
And with that, we've concluded tonight's zoning agenda.
All right. If there's no further business to come for council, is there a motion to adjourn?
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Adjourned. How long do we need? Ready to roll? We are reconvened in meeting number 18. I think the next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities Committee, also chaired by Councilmember Doran.
Welcome back.
Councilmember, the floor is yours.
First, in the Public Utilities Committee tonight, we have ordinance 081, 0810-2022 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter a constructive contract with VCU Sewer of Ohio LLC for the 2021 Annual Aligning Contract Project to authorize the appropriation and transfer of $4,731,639.50 from the Sanitary Sewer Reserve Fund to the Ohio Water Development Loan Fund to authorize the appropriation of expenditure of $4,731,639.50 from the Ohio Water Development Loan Fund to authorize a transfer in expenditure of up to $2,000 for prevailing wage services to Department of Public Service within the sanitary general obligation voted bond fund and to amend the 2021 capital improvement budget. This project will rehabilitate existing sanitary sewers within the city of Columbus, reducing inflows and infiltration to the city sanitary sewer system, which will reduce overflows to basements and waterways in the Linden and Hilltop planning areas. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Baro, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 0885-2022 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to establish a purchase order to make payments to Delaware County for sewer service provided during the fiscal year 2022 and to authorize expenditure of $2,200,000 from the Sewer Operating and Sanitary Fund. This agreement authorizes discharge of sewage from Delaware County into sewer system of the city of Columbus and vice versa, from the city of Columbus sewer system into Delaware County sewer systems in order to avoid duplication of wastewater treatment, a process that we've been doing since 1991. Fun piece of trivia. Anyone, any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 0986-2022 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a guaranteed maximum reimbursement agreement with Kittle Property Group Inc. for the Big Run slash Hell Branch sanitary sewer extension CIP 650, 604-11111, or I'm sorry, -100000 for the Division of Sewer and Drainage to authorize the transfer of up to $1,201,717.18 and expenditure of up to $1,877,256.90 from the Sanitary General Obligation Bond Fund and to amend the 2021 capital improvement budget and to declare an emergency. Upon passage of this ordinance, the city of Columbus will agree to pay a guaranteed maximum reimbursement of $1,877,256.90 to the Kittle Property Group for the Big Run Hell Branch sanitary sewer extension. The developers agreed to construct the improvements at their cost and then obtain reimbursement from the city provided by the Department of Public Utilities. This provides the developer to construct the public improvement on the city's behalf in the Westland community, and the project is publicly bid and subject to reimbursement agreement within the city. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1086-2022 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a universal term contract for the option to purchase pole line hardware with Wesco Distribution Inc. to authorize expenditure of $1 from the General Budget Reservation, BRPO002025, to waive the provisions of competitive bidding and declare emergency. The Division of Power is the sole user of the pole line hardware, which is used in our electric distribution system. The Finance and Management Department respectfully requests this legislation to be considered as an emergency to ensure the supply of these parts that are vital to electrical distribution within the city. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Thank you. Council President, your permission? May I move on to Building and Zoning Policy Committee? Thank you. In that committee tonight, we have ordinance 1041-2022 to authorize the Director of Building and Zoning Services to enter a professional services contract with Lisa Weiss Consulting, Inc. for the zoning code and map update project and to authorize an appropriation of $894,637 within the Development Services Fund, to authorize expenditure of up to $1,849,637 for the Development Services Fund to pay for this contract and to declare an emergency. This legislation funds the zoning code and map update project for the initial two-year period. Because the project is expected to go, extend beyond two, two years potentially, the contract will include two optional 12-month extensions subject to council reauthorization and additional funding allocation. This effort is necessary to act on the findings of an independent analysis which determined the city's zoning code does not support our community's shared aspiration to be an equitable, thriving city. An updated zoning code is an important tool to improactively managing growth. Recognizing the collaborative action will be critical in this effort. A companion piece of legislation authorizes the Department, the Building and Zoning Services Director to anywhere in a contract with Rama Consulting to assist in communication and engagement during the update process. To speak more on this legislation, we have Assistant Director for Growth Policy at the Department of Economic Development, Kevin Wheeler. Mr. Wheeler, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Chair Doran, President Harden, and other members of council. You all know this is, work is long overdue, and housing, transportation, sustainability, job development, equity are all impacted by zoning. The assessment phase identified a number of challenges with the code. This, tonight, is part of the process of beginning to address those. We're putting the team together. This is a critical step to bring together these, these two firms. They each bring to the project a number of excellent partners who are also highly skilled. We worked with the Finance Department's Office of Purchasing and the Office of Diversity and Inclusion in this process. We're all pleased with these, these consultants, and we're looking forward to getting started. I should say that this is a collaborative effort by the Department of Building and Zoning Services and Development. I want to acknowledge the leadership of Building and Zoning Services Director Messer, who's here this evening, in moving this forward for his department, and then the support that we've received from my director, Mike Stevens, as well. This is going to be complex, challenging work. It's going to take time, and it's going to require the engagement, ideas, support of the community, including those who have historically not been considered in such conversations. That's one of the things that we want to focus on early. I want to emphasize that we don't have specific proposals at this point. There's no proposal to bring forward. We're beginning the work to do that now. Early in this work, some of our priorities include developing communication tools so that we can be in touch with folks early in an ongoing way, some initial stakeholder education and engagement. We want to provide education and outreach so that folks can catch up with why they would even care about a zoning code, what's, what's that mean to them, so that as we begin to ask them to comment on more specific proposals, they're in a better position to do that. We want to make sure that we're reconnecting with folks that we've already talked to. We heard from a lot of folks last year. We want to double back and check in with those folks again. We're going to take the time to look at how we will assess code update proposals against equity, or not against it, but for the purposes of equity. We know that zoning often has been something that's used to exclude. We don't want that to happen with our update, so we want to take the time to understand those issues. We are going to have an initial focus on mixed-use corridors and centers, including the Linkus corridors of West Broad Street, East Main Street, Northwest. We feel that's really important. And so, I won't continue because, you know, I know that it's late, but I will just say that we're very grateful for the support, Chair Doran's of you, President Harden, of this council and this work. This is really important work, and we're just excited to get underway, and tonight is a big, is a big step towards that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. And considering this body just spent over an hour on zoning variances and rezonings, I think we in particular know the, the need for this legislation, but I also just want to say, we have council president, we have a mayor, we have a director both in, in development and building zoning services and myself that are interested in tackling this, and that is not insignificant, considering everything we talk about here is at some point connected to land use, and that's what we're talking about, trying to change for the better. So, thank you for your work and looking forward to getting this started even more so. So, do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
I would just say, Mr. Chair, that I heard in the reading of that that it also allows for two extra-year extensions. I would not like to grant those two extra. I know there's a lot of work being done, and we just appreciate the entire department and all the folks that are, are engaging, as well as the community members. This is, I think, one of the most important thing that we're working on as a city for long-term impact, so.
And I think that's important to highlight, that we, we had companion legislation, as I said, on consent tonight, that is exclusively focused on that community outreach to make sure that residents of Columbus, and specifically the consultant that we're working with, has a long history with working with under, underrepresented members of the community to make sure that they're part of this, so we know how important that is.
It's great work. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Doran's favorite, President Harden.
Passed.
And finally, with all that, I am done for the evening, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next committee to come for council is the Health and Human Services chaired by Councilmember Favor.
Thank you. Tonight, we have ordinance 901-2022 to authorize the Board of Health to accept a reproductive health and wellness program grant from the Ohio Department of Health to authorize the appropriation of $1,340,000 in grant money and fee revenues from the unappropriated balance of the Health Department Grants Fund and to declare an emergency. The reproductive health and wellness program will allow for critical services to men, women, and adolescents.